I would like to welcome everyone watching on ITV. And I understand there may be an issue with them, but welcome you as you come on and via livestream and call the May 24, 2022 Regular Meeting to order with all Board members present, either here or in their offices upstairs. So with that, before we bring onboard our JROTC, I would like at this time to ask that we take another moment of silence for the victims of the robbed elementary school shooting in Uvalde, Texas. Thank you. Let's take a moment. Please note that the use of masks by the Board members and those who are in the auditorium is strongly encouraged due to recent increases in COVID-19 case rates. There are masks available in the lobby if you need one. Thank you. And with that, the Army JROTC color guard from Hoover High School will now present the colors. Thank you. Trustee Patterson, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Right in your heart? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And please be seated. Thank you to Hoover High School. I would like a motion to adopt today's agenda with item E2, the report on English, item G1. The district-
So moved.
Thank you. And a second by?
Second. McQuarrie.
Dr. McQuarrie. Okay, we have the upstairs folks answering here. Please vote, if you will. And let's hear it, Trustee Patterson.
Aye.
Okay. And then we'd like to hear from Dr. Mike. Dr. McQuarrie?
Aye.
And Trustee Beiser?
Aye.
So that passes unanimously with the student concurring. Thank you. Mrs.?
Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public. Board Bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda public comment. The list of speakers is attached to Agenda Item B2. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, you will come to the podium to speak. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Zoom does not allow staff to access your personal device to unmute a speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so that you know when your item is coming up for discussion. If you would like to sign up for public comment, iPads are available in the back of the auditorium and in the lobby.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to move on to student presentation, and we have the principal of Lewis Middle School, Principal Justin Phillips will introduce the video.
Good evening, Board of Education and the broader San Diego Unified Learning Community. My name is Justin Phillips, and I'm the proud principal of Lewis Middle School, a California distinguished school in the Henry Cluster. And we have a vision that our students are seen, loved, challenged, and supported so that they can realize a future of their dreams. And I hope that you get the chance to see this in tonight's presentation. We're going to bring you into the classrooms of some of our STEAM classrooms. We could highlight multiple things on campus where there's high levels of learning, but we're taking you into some STEAM classrooms where students learn with state art labs and instructional materials and expert teachers. These students, many of our students go on to Henry High School where there's a renowned engineering pathway, and our students don't just come with excitement, they also come with immense level of preparation. But I'm going to let you hear it in the words of our students, so thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Education, and thank you all for coming, students and staff of San Diego Unified District.
My name is Hawa. I'm a seventh grader.
My name is Cole. I'm an eighth grader.
And my name is Lemon. I'm a seventh grader.
We are the second largest middle school in our district in San Diego distinguished schools.
At Lewis, we are focused on preparing students for high school, college, careers, and beyond.
We're at the Lewis Think of It Qualcomm Lab.
And here we have offered classes such as Engineering, Computer Science, Arts Media, and Entertaining.
These classes offer a STEAM pathway that prepares programs at Patrick Henry like Engineering, Graphic Design, Video Production, Animation, and Printmaking.
In Engineering, we learn mechanical, civil, structural, engineering, robotics, and the design process of engineering.
I chose Gary Tech because, well, I like building things, and building things is fun. Getting these power tools is a whole lot of fun. And I mean, sometimes you can, like, think of Thinkercad, like, 3D modeling and stuff. It's really amazing and fun.
I chose this because of the same reasons, we do, like, 3D print stuff and all the projects we do.
We're making Morse code, basically. Before there were phones, we used to use this to talk, and there'd be spaces and dots. Right there, we're doing apples. Or, I forgot the last word, apples off to communicate with somebody else.
Oh, I didn't do that.
Trying to make a-
Here you could create anything that you want, that you could want.
Yeah, last time we were coding, we were doing it with microbits, and we were using block code, which is a little bit simpler than whatever this code is. So, but we had to create a project that would help either people running bikes to school or people, like, that would help the community. So I created, like, bike flasher and stuff, so, like, turn signals. And you would just, like, have to press a button or shake the microbit and arrow to say turn right or turn left.
It's somewhat complicated, but it's generally simple, once you get into it. So you, the point of it is to learn how to code, that's the point of this class. And-
I've always been into technology, and like, I love, like, watching, like, these professional coders and all the apps they've designed and all, like, the money they've made and like, all, how the new, the new generation is like so much different than the old generation with, like, all the new things, like, I bet about probably 30 years ago, but this wasn't even like a class. But it's so cool that we can use this and put it into our career opportunities.
In digital design, we get to market products, make our own businesses, and learn skills
Hi, I'm Cora Trojanowski, and I teach the elective pathway here at Lewis Middle School. I am excited to share with you that we are one of the first schools that have a continued partnership with Qualcomm in the San Diego area. We also work with other industries, and we partnership with the USS Midway, which many schools experience. We helped write the curriculum for the damage control field, everything that happens there.
Invite you to head over down to our campus and see what we're programming, creating, and discovering.
Thank you. That's beautiful. And the question is, do all of our middle schools have labs where folks can do things and not sit in staid chairs and not move, you know, especially middle schools, right? Sorry, middle schools.
I think that's a challenge for all of our middle schools, and a challenge for Justin to make sure that happens at all of our middle schools. Go JP.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to us today.
President Whitehurst Payne, I just want to say thank you very much to the students at Lewis Middle School, which is in Sub District B in the Patrick Henry Cluster. I just think it's phenomenal, the work that they're doing, programming, creating, and discovering. And I've been thrilled to participate with students from San Diego Unified at the USS Midway in their educational department. There's a lot of really hands-on engineering programs there where a lot of our schools do participate. Thank you very much, and great job, Lewis Middle School.
Thank you, Trustee Beiser. And with that, let us move on to the report on closed session. Counsel, do we have anything?
We do. Thank you. In closed session, the Board voted five to zero to approve a settlement in OAH case number 2022020589.
Thank you. And with that, administrative assignments.
Thank you, President Dr. Whitehurst Payne. I am thrilled, and I know the, the community in Claremont of Longfellow UTK Eight Academy will be thrilled tonight. I am very pleased to appoint Lisa Herzog. Welcome to sunny San Diego, California. I know you're coming across country from New York, so welcome. We're delighted that you'll be here. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. And now let us move on to our associated student body. We have a couple of representatives here today. So what I want you to do is to introduce yourself, and then tell us about what's going on academically and what's going on socially, emotionally at your campus. Okay?
Hi, I'm Chloe Moya, and I'm a junior from Mount Everest Academy, and I'm Vice President of ASB. Our president is currently out of town, so I'm here representing MEA. Mount Everest is an alternative K through 12 school, and we really pride ourselves on being able to do school differently through independent study and giving students the opportunity to pursue their passions outside of typical school hours. And so our population is made up of accomplished and award-winning actors, musicians, ice skaters, artists, and of course, students. Most recently and most excitingly, Mount Everest won a Civic Learning Award from the Judicial Branch of California, which honored our student-led clubs and campaigns involved in civil discourse and social justice, which includes our GSA Club, Gender Sexuality Alliance, Ally Action, and our Mental Health Club. At nearly all times, our campus is flourishing with hands-on learning opportunities, especially right now. FAPA has sponsored a student-led and design mural, which we're currently painting, and a series of community paint days to further involve students and staff in beautifying their school site. Students are also doing extensive work outside on our two garden areas, and it's spring, so flowers are in full bloom. It's very pretty, and fruits and veggies are also growing. The chickens are also enjoying the company in the garden area, our three chickens. They're very sociable. They love being around people, and they're cared for entirely by middle and high school students. And as with many schools, we recently made it through AP testing, so the atmosphere is much less stressful. And we're in full swing with end-of-year activities like prom, which occurred two weeks ago at the Mission Bay Yacht Club. Our seniors went to Disneyland just yesterday for grad night, and we are busy prepping for graduation and our end-of-year picnic. So those are very exciting. Thank you so much for your support of MEA, and thank you for your time.
That sounds good, and I'm glad to hear you're, you have social activity. Your students are getting together, not just isolated on computer or whatever, but they're getting together. Very good. Thank you. All right. Now it's your time.
Hello, everyone. My name's Andrea Laina. I am the ASB president at Madison High School. So I kind of want to give you guys a little broader of what we've done this year, more than specific activities. So as we know, with COVID, we've had to face a lot of adversity. We also had a new advisor that came in during COVID, and our principal has recently left. So it makes life very difficult, especially as a president. But our main focus has been finding a why to what we do and being thoughtful and meaningful, and really just giving the students a voice is very important. We have something called the NEST check-in. The NEST at our school stands for Noble, Excellent, Supportive, and Thoughtful, which is what we want our students to embody. So when we think of that why, we focus on the NEST and really pay attention to what we're doing and why we're doing it. And our primary focuses this year were anti-bowling and inclusion. We have an event called I Pledge, which takes place every year. We had anti-bowling training with Mick Raven. Some of you guys may know him. He's, does a lot for our district. And with this training, we were later able to do lessons and activities with our middle and elementary schools, where we taught them on how to be supportive, how to be inclusive, and how to deal with bowling within themselves and with their friends, and how to just be better people overall in our community. We also have implemented MTSS, the Multi-Tier Support System, and have been practicing a lot of restorative justice to ensure that students are getting the mental health care they need and providing extra support. We don't know what students are going through, especially coming back from COVID. It's been extremely difficult for students. So really having a more open and broad perspective on our students' needs. We also have started a new class called Freshman Foundations, which teaches them finances, life skills, study habits, and overall prepares them for a successful future. We have a variety of AP courses, and since about four years ago, we started adding a lot more college courses through Mesa to prepare our students for college. Our automotive engineering, actually, this is super interesting, are working on the fastest electric car in the world right now. We were on the news yesterday. So they're doing pretty good so far, but definitely that's something to be looking out for. Another super cool thing this year, we're one of the few schools to have a career counselor, and you've definitely been able to see how that affects our students. We have an extremely high, we're, we got an award for being the school with one of the most scholarships. So yeah, she allows students, you can go in, talk to her about your future plan. She's brought in tons of speakers for, today we had a speaker come in for men of color. So that's been an incredible, incredible thing to have. Another thing earlier in the year, homecoming. We thought it would be a little iffy going in, just because so many kids were scared of COVID, but we had the highest attendance that we've ever had in our homecoming. So that's been extremely encouraging for sure. And then to finish it off, our sports, we're a very big sports school. Our, the majority of our sports have either been CIF League Champs or CIF Champions or League Champs. So yeah, we're definitely had a good school year filled with lots of spirit and positivity, regardless of COVID and how hard that's been for everyone.
Thank you for that report. What about you personally? What are you planning on doing next year?
So next year, I'm going to be attending Mesa, either to major in psychology or education to be a special needs teacher.
Hmm. Did you apply for the scholarship that we had through the district?
I heard about it from Sophia after the deadline passed, so I wasn't able to, but I did hear about it.
We've got to find a way to get it out there, the announcement out there. I think Acacia, are you out in the audience? We've got to find a way to break that barrier so we can get that information out to our students.
Yeah, for sure.
Because we're constantly looking for students to apply. Thank you. Anybody else with any questions or comment? Thank you, and welcome to the two of you. Love having you here. Now let us move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, President Dr. Whitehurst Payne. As most of you know, my favorite part of this job is board meetings. No one's listening out there, I guess. That's a joke. That's, I'm just kidding. If you see that quote somewhere, joke. It's really spending time with our students and our staff and our schools and the, the different events. And much of the report that I have this evening is to really brag about our schools and the events and, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, I know you've attended the Brigade Pass, the Joint Brigade Pass and Review for our JROTC program, and I had the honor this year to be a reviewer and to work with Colonel Swan. So I want to thank him for putting on that event, and thank all of our leaders in the program. And while Morris High School probably had the most enthusiasm, and UC, UC was out there representing, Lincoln was out there, and Mayor Mason, this is going to hurt some hearts, but really, we should celebrate Scripps Ranch, because Scripps Ranch, Air Force JROTC earned and overall exceeds standards on the formal unit evaluation conducted this year, and a great appreciation for Major Sergeant Ferdinand Toledo for his leadership and all the cadets. Sorry, Trustee Patterson, UC showed up, and Patrick Henry also showed up, Justin representing the, the cluster there, but the, the top award went to Scripps Ranch High School, so congratulations to them. And also got a chance to participate in the ACE Program, Appreciation for Classified Employees. I know many of us did. I had the opportunity to go to Foster and spent some time with a couple of students. One, Ms. Lola, had an opportunity to spend lunch with her and helped her eat her corn. She did a fabulous job, ate like three quarters, and I was not giving up. You know, it was, they were ready to go to the, the G Tube feeding, and I'm like, no, we're going to, we're going to get this corn in. But we did do some tube feeding, and then I spent time with Xavier. And I know we say, don't throw baseballs in the, inside the rooms. Well, we, we didn't throw baseballs, just tennis balls. And they were bouncing off the lights, and we were having a good time. Apologies to the custodial staff if they need to clean up anything that was broken. But Xavier and I spent some time playing baseball, and what a great arm he has. And thank you to the para unit for putting that together. Really, I really enjoyed that. And then I had some, as if we don't spend enough time, I had some opportunity to spend with, with Zach Patterson, Trustee Patterson, who won the Princeton Prize Award for advocating and leading equity and race relations. What a phenomenal honor it is for you and I know for us. Our focus has really been leaning around equity and inclusion and diversity, and you exemplify that, Zach, and you are so deserving, and it was quite an honor to keynote that event on your behalf. Sending you much love as you go off to Duke, so thank you. I do have to list a little bit here, and I know staff will talk about the May revise, but I have to say thank you to the Board for all of your advocacy, staff for their advocacy, our community. We are going to be able to see investments in extended learning, special education, Universal TK, community meals, universal school meals, our community schools, and, you know, we've been big advocates for universal transitional kindergarten. And staff, you should be very proud of yourselves for all the work that you do. We're seeing more money in the base, and we're seeing more in the cola. Thank you so much. We are so fortunate to have a strong delegation in Sacramento, particularly so grateful for the Pro Tem, Tony Atkins, and her advocacy and her leadership to address the needs of our students. And we will continue to advocate for our students and our staff for more funding that goes into the base of our local control funding formula. And thank you to our labor partners who continue to advocate as well. San Diego Unified is strongly represented in Sacramento for our staff and our students. So thank you all. We did wrap up our federal advocacy with a meeting with Senator Padilla, and he, he certainly articulated that he loves San Diego. He's been to San Diego Unified in our classrooms, and I was certainly quick to invite him back. So hopefully we can get him back on our campuses, and we can continue to support his advocacy at the federal level. And lastly, I am thrilled to say that last week, we were able to bring on Dr. Fabiola Bagula, who's in audience, and I know the camera's here, but welcome, and thank you for returning home to do this great work with us here in San Diego Unified, as well as joining our Chief of Staff, Enrique Ralcho. Thank you, Dr. Ralcho, for being here and continuing your advocacy, and I've seen a huge difference already in the work that we're doing. Thank you all so much, and thank you to the staff who are here. I know we got to work on those cushions for those seats, but lowest on the priority, I guess. Not much time spent here. So that is my report, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to our student trustee, who I understand is to be congratulated for another award. Very good.
Thank you. Little bit challenging, obviously, today to have celebrations. I just, it's upsetting. It just continues to happen over and over again, and it was, it was just Sacramento a few weeks ago, right? And we had another incident in Houston, Texas before that. I was just reading in the New York Times, they did a list of all the different shootings that we've had. I think we're at like 20-something at this point, and what are we, we're in, we're in May. So it's really, really challenging, and I just think I don't have a, necessarily have a solution. One of the things I appreciate that I think about, I've heard so many people talk about, you know, the importance of mental health and this. One of the things I valued is we were just thinking about some of the things I did this week. I did get to visit a community school, and I think about the importance of how we support students and how we show up for students when we provide everything on campus, and we work with our community partnerships to make sure that students are supported at every level, because we know that before we can even learn, we need to make sure someone's okay, and we need to make sure they're, they're present, and they're engaged, and they're loved, and they're valued. And we obviously have some work to do to get there, have a, have a lot of work to do to get there. It was really great, though, to get to see what that model looks like and to think about how we're going to move forward and hopefully do a better job supporting our students. In other news today is that was the student board member election. While I unfortunately will not be announcing the results live right now, you will, you will be, candidates will be receiving that information soon, and that'll go out to the public as well. So that was an exciting way to exercise our democratic- So that was an exciting way to exercise our democratic process and to see students show up and choose their member on the Board of Education. So very, very exciting. That's all I have. And again, I would just share us to think about more than thoughts and prayers, ask ourselves, what can we do? And I don't, I wish I could say I have the solution, but I don't. So we have some more discussions to have.
Thank you, Trustee Patterson. That's so true. Let's do the Vice President.
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. I'll just share a few school visits I was able to do. For a few weeks there, I wasn't able to. But this last week, I got out to Innovation Middle School. I went with Dr. Jackson and our Chief of Staff Enrique. And we were with Principal Stephen Will. And Dr. Jackson was on the floor reading books to the, no, that was at the next school. That was at Whitman. Wrong school, not middle school. That wouldn't be cool. So, but we toured Innovation and we saw that it's beautiful school. It's, I think, the second year it's now been up and running and it's just gorgeous. So it was a short visit, hoping to get back to spend a little more time there. Then we were at Whitman. That's where Dr. Jackson was on the floor reading books to the kids. And that was a lot of fun. They were giving us flowers from their garden and vegetables and always a kind of a high point to go to the schools. You know, you can't leave those schools without, you know, smiling after a visit like that. But then, yesterday, went on a Trace Bus Tour. And the Trace Program is, yes, I think Dr. Whitehurst Payne has done that tour as well. It's a program to help students that are transitioning, special education students that are, don't have a diploma yet, helping them transition into real life. And it's a very unique program. I learned firsthand. You know, they work on anything from life, work skills, to life skills, to helping the kids learn how to, teaching them how to vote, taking them to their medical appointments, helping them sign up for disability. I mean, it's just amazing, all the resources and the staff is so passionate, so dedicated. It's Francia, and I'm sorry, I don't know Francia's last name. But, and then Kristi Gonzalez, who I spent the day with. And I got to spend a lot of time in public transportation, more than I have in many years. And it does open your eyes and, you know, you realize this, you know, a lot of people, this is their everyday, you know, that's what they deal with every day, waiting for a bus for, I think, 45 minutes at one point. We also took the trolley at one point. We took the kids to Midway. They actually got, they get a chance to work there, wipe down some of the planes and equipment and had lunch there. And then went to Smart and Final and they helped to, they learned the job skills there as well. So it was really a fun day and a great way to connect in a way, really, you know, hands-on with our students. So that was yesterday. And finally, I also want to share that I would love to get out to all the graduations that are happening, but unfortunately, they're all happening on one day, which seems to be June 14th. So for those of you that I won't be able to get to the graduations that have asked me about it, I'm very sad about that. It was easier with Petco when we had them all staggered. I'm gonna be doing at least four in that one day and a few others. But if I don't get out to your graduation, it's not because I don't want to. I'd love to get to all of them, but I'm spreading myself as thin as I can to get to as many as I can. And we'll have other representatives there. But, you know, it's just unfortunate that they're all at the same time. So I think I'll stop there with my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning those items. And now, Trustee Berlara.
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. Yes, similar to the superintendent, I got to participate in the ACE Program last week and accompanied our para educator, Shemonte Brown, at Canyon Hills High School. And was able to tag along with her students, Bree and Aiden, as they did their rounds with the coffee cart around the, around the school in the morning, which was really amazing. It's amazing how much detail the students, you know, are able to remember in really running a business. So that was fantastic. And thank you, Shemonte, for letting me shadow you. Speaking of community schools, Saturday morning at Hoover High School, which is one of our pilot community schools, we partnered with Avenues for Success and County Supervisor Nathan Fletcher and had a Career and Resources Fair there at the school. And so it was opening up the school to families to access resources. And then we had several employers, including union apprenticeship programs, that were there to provide opportunities to our students. So it was very much what a community school is supposed to be. And then sticking with the Hoover Cluster, Saturday night, we got to participate with our great, longtime, community-based partner, the Ocean Discovery Institute. And as we know, our district partnered with Ocean Discovery Institute to build the Living Lab, which is just there near Joyner Elementary School and serves now over 6,000 students per year in the Hoover Cluster. And one of the most inspiring parts of the event Saturday night was there were testimonials from young people who came through our school district, graduated from Hoover High School, participated in ODI, and are now professional scientists. Working, you know, either in universities or with employers around the region. I remember the first time I met with the folks at Ocean Discovery Institute, they didn't talk about that their mission was to avoid all the negatives. So it wasn't about, we're gonna keep our kids off of drugs and away from gangs and all that kind of stuff. It was, we're gonna turn our young people into scientists. And they have. And, you know, we've seen that in action. So incredible organization and just a great partnership with our district.
Thank you. I saw that on my calendar, but I was in Sacramento. How can I be in two places? With that, we will go with Trustee Dr. McQuary.
Thank you. So a shout out to the clusters that met throughout the year, providing the leadership that guided our schools through another difficult and challenging year. Last year, I attended the La Jolla Cluster, led by Megan and Heather and Assistant Superintendent Missy Moreno. And I had an opportunity to hear about the excitement generated by Superintendent Dr. Jackson's visit to the schools in the La Jolla Cluster. During the La Jolla Cluster meeting, I had the pleasure of introducing Trustee Zachary Patterson, who shared the enthusiasm about the student, school board member elections and the collaborative work that he and La Jolla High School student Aiden Kleiman did in co-authoring the resolution that they will presenting during tonight's board meeting. Plus, we heard a positive report from the Cluster Committee examining the district's math policies, in which the committee expressed satisfaction with communication with the district and the progress being made regarding changes related to the upgrading of the enhanced math program with new course offerings and assessments that enable students to be where they need to get with the math instruction they need to receive. And again, I also share the remorse and the sadness for the continued shootings that are happening at our schools. And with Trustee Patterson, I know we don't have a solution, but we need to get there. And we can only get there by all of us working together.
Thank you, Dr. McQuary. Trustee Beister.
Yeah, thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. I too would like to talk a little bit about the tragedy and the carnage at Uvalde Elementary School in Texas. As a math teacher, I see the anxiety and fear in the faces of my students every time we have a lockdown drill. I also see it in the days following these unavoidable tragedies, which are all too common. We must bring back the assault rifle ban from the 1990s. In the 1990s, that was the last time our country realized a reduction in firearm homicides and deaths. My heart aches and my resolve is renewed. We have to ask ourselves this important question. What would our founding fathers do if this carnage was a reality in the 1770s? Certainly, they would not let this stand. In three days, the National Rifle Association or the NRA, in three days, the NRA will be having their annual convention in Houston, Texas, where the Governor of Texas, Greg Abbott, and the Texas US Senator Cruz will speak. And they will fight anything to ban assault rifles in our country. Voting matters. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. And when I heard it this afternoon, I could only think about the last time we had a regular meeting. We were talking about guns and we brought in folks to talk about it. It just seems that we, as a people, as Americans, we don't have the will to do what's going to save our children. Not talking about taking away guns, period, but we need to do something to restrict it. So I think, I feel for those families and other families that will come forward in the future, but we've got to do something, more than just talk, as Trustee Patterson said. And I also just want to quickly mention that this weekend, we just got back on this California School Board Association and we went to the Delegate Assembly Meeting in Sacramento and did a lot of voting and all of that. So I spent my weekend there in meetings with your peers and colleagues. And we're working together to see if we can't enhance education overall. But it just goes back to the thing that we keep talking about, and that's a fact that we don't seem able to get beyond our personal feelings about guns. And we say that we care when children die. But if we did, we would work together to get something done because that's what love does. It shows it. It demonstrates. It doesn't just talk. And moments of silence, you know, good, but let's do something to ensure that our children are safe. That, thank you. Let us move on to item E1. We will have an update on LCAP Goal Four. And I'd like to have Superintendent Jackson to please introduce the item.
Thank you, President Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Love to have you all join me in welcoming tonight's presenters. We have Catherine Nelson, our Executive Director of Leadership and Learning, Marisol Marine, the Director of Professional Development for Administrative Support and Integrated Teams, and Keisha Borden, our President of San Diego Education Association, who will be focusing on LCAP Goal Number Four, which is focused on quality teaching and learning with an emphasis on educator growth and development process.
Good evening, Superintendent, President Whitehurst Payne, and esteemed trustees. My name is Catherine Nelson, and we are thrilled to be here this evening to discuss LCAP Goal Four, Quality Leadership, Teaching and Learning, with a specific focus on E3, Educator Growth and Development. I'm really honored to introduce the dynamic team that is leading in partnership, Marisol Marine, and SDEA's President, Keisha Borden.
Thank you. This is the first time, no, this is the second time I've presented to the board in my tenure here. So I just wanted to say thank you, Catherine, and I want to say thank you, Keisha, for being here, representing the E3 LCAP Goal Four. I'd like to start off with our collective why. We are on the precipice of an institutional shift of 50 years in the making. And as we evolve from an evaluation system created in 1971, we are now shifting to a system of growth and development. We believe that this shift will create systematic change in empowering and challenging educators to guide their own professional learning based on their needs and the needs of their students. We also believe with this shift that we'll be fostering a collaborative culture where educators and school leaders work collectively to meet professional goals in service of student achievement. And to support all staff by providing high-quality, job-embedded professional development through each step of the process. And as our shirts say, this is the E3 spirit. So you'll see our timeline here of our partnership with SDEA. And we rely on these partnerships. After 50 years, a new system was warranted. And in collaboration with SDEA, a new direction was envisioned, a shift from evaluation to growth and development, where educators would drive their own professional learning. We believe that this united partnership was crucial to this work. We knew it was a time to shift our current practice and establish a model that would empower educators to be innovative when thinking about their own learning. Through this collaboration, the E3 Growth and Development System was created. With this shift, we had to have a paradigm shift through language and mindset. As we redefined our evaluation system to one of growth and development, we needed to shift not only our mindset, but as well as our language. Let's look at the shifts of the new system and think about the role these shifts play in supporting our learning. We don't use the word evaluation anymore. We use the term growth and development. We're not evaluating. We're on cycle. And instead of three objectives, we're, we have one professional growth goal that not only focuses on student impacts, but the impacts are on students and on the educator. And the partnership, the roles, it's not about evaluator or evaluatee. It's a partnership in learning, a coaching model. And those relationships cultivate true growth and development. Everything that we do is aligned to our LCAP Goals. Here is where we see the true shift in practice begin to take shape. The E3 system creates a collaborative culture through the spirit of continuous growth. First, by educator, where educators are empowered because they drive their own professional learning through a self-assessment and reflection. Partnerships are also cultivated between the school leaders and educators as they collectively learn and participate in the growth cycle. And lastly, the job-embedded professional learning is grounded in research-based practices to support school leaders in calibrating and guiding educators to improve instruction to ultimately impact student learning. There are many impacts this year as we continue to work in transforming growth and development. We have successfully been able to create a common language around instructional practices through the use of standards and the creation of rubrics for all educators to assess their practice. We strategically integrated self-assessment and reflection as components of the growth cycle to shift the mindsets and to normalize the manner in which we approach professional learning. We also led a team of non-classroom educators to facilitate the creation of a parallel growth process for educators in our related services, contributing to the work to one day bring the process of growth and development to all of our educators within our district. Coming back to cultivating those learning partnerships, the E3 process systematically creates opportunities for collaboration from the materials produced to the interactions within the growth cycle. Some of this year's highlights include protocols that were developed and used to detail out each step of the growth process, providing participants with transparency and clear expectations. An online platform was co-developed with the help of Power School called My Professional Growth and Development, or MYPGD, which not only houses the growth cycle, but creates a space for coaching conversations between educators and their site leaders, adding yet another layer to the shifts in institutional practice. Additionally, we, while continuing our ongoing collaboration with SDA, we collectively formed an integrated team to build the advisory component. an integrated team to build the advisory component, a structure to identify and support struggling teachers, providing assistance at every layer of, every level of the growth, educators' growth. And then finally, facilitation of student voices into the process through our collaboration with Student Board Member Trustee Zachary Peterson, Patterson, I'm sorry, and his vision of creating a system, a system of student feedback as an option for teachers to have, to provide reflection. The last is the integral piece of the E3 system is that the belief that supports must be in place to advance learning. In modeling that belief, this year, E3 delivered ongoing professional learning in a variety of settings and manners to meet the needs of our participants within each step of the growth cycle. Training has been continuous and job-embedded. During principals institutes, we focused on strategies such as evidence-based feedback to bring a collective understanding of how to use our district-created rubrics to define instructional practice, providing district calibration of observations for the first time. We've provided ongoing training and adapted to those learning needs of the participants via Zoom, self-paced modules, providing office hours. And lastly, the most impactful has been coaching our educators and school leaders on-site within, with their individual needs. The data and the impacts. As we enter our fourth year of our pilot, of our fourth year piloting E3, we are proud of our data, even with the complexities of this year. We supported 478 educators who chose to engage in the growth and development process with their site leader. Data ran in, data run in January revealed that 47% or 261 educators were on track to finalize their goals. We, we are always reflecting and we adapted. We provided additional supports, advertising, consultations with educators and school leaders, and modified our timelines due to the variant surge. And now 40, 447 teachers or 93% of our educators are on track to finalize their growth goals they initiated this school year. This data is derived from 124 schools facilitating the process, with 83 schools participating, ranging from elementary to high school and even one department, the VAPA department. And now I'm going to hand this over to Keisha.
Thank you, Marisol. So moving forward in the, our work doesn't end there. So we are looking forward to next year, the 22, 23 school year. We will continue the pilot for the E3 System of Growth and Development for our classroom educators who are on cycle. We will be implementing the voluntary advisory component to support educators who are not yet meeting their growth goals or meeting their standards. We will launch a pilot program of growth and development for our non-classroom educators. And after it all, we will align all professional learning opportunities for educators to the California Standards for the Teaching Profession, the CSTPs. So we welcome you to join in this journey.
Thank you. We have no speakers, but.
We do have a glimpse into that spirit of E3 with the principal and an educator from, oh my gosh, John Muir, Language Academy. Thank you.
My name is Stanley Anjan, and I'm principal at John Muir Language Academy, Spanish Immersion K8. And I've been with San Diego Unified School District now for just over a year.
My name is Curtis Walker. I've been in San Diego Unified for two years and been teaching for about 20 years total.
You know, one of the things that I, I myself came into this process with was being a learner and work alongside my teacher this year in refining my own practice on how to better coach and support teachers, I think really has been a, an amazing opportunity as a new principal at a school.
Looking at challenges as an opportunity for growth. As I said, I have been teaching for many years, but I always believe that we always have room to improve, to do things better, to change the way that we look at things when we have new information. I'm not just looking at this as a teacher, I'm looking at it as a teacher who's learning to be a better teacher. So the partnership between the principal and the teacher has been truly collaborative, where we're, we're working together on this. There are times when I take the lead and there's times when he takes the lead, and so it's really been teamwork, wouldn't you say so?
I would definitely agree. I, I believe that not only have we made time to collaborate, deep diving into data, having conversations about how our students are doing, the environment in which they're learning. And it's been wonderful not only to work on it as a process, but to see it reflected in teaching practice and in the learning that's happening with our students in the classroom. It's a collaboration and a partnership, I would say. And I think for me as an administrator here to coach, and I feel like that, the instructional leader on a campus, that allows me also to, you know, be vulnerable in my practice and ensure that, you know, that I'm learning also from my teachers. So it's a reciprocal process that I think we can enhance happening on our campus across our district.
Okay, thank you. Don't leave yet, just a moment. Let's see if there are any questions, students. Do you have any questions? Anything you'd like to ask? Okay, Trustee Barrera.
Yeah, I just want to thank Catherine Marisol and Keisha for the presentation tonight. I think when we see the work and the, and the progress that we're making and the way that you present this, it seems like such a no-brainer, right? It seems like this is exactly the way that we should approach, you know, the growth and development of our educators. It's important that we always remind ourselves the context that this process came out of was not long ago that we had calls for teacher evaluation and using the teacher evaluation process really as a tool for punishing and denigrating the teaching profession. So in the name of education reform, we saw a lot of people who were saying that the way that we need to change the teacher evaluation process is we need to make it easier to identify bad teachers and fire them. And that's the point of the evaluation process. And needless to say that when you approach the concept of evaluation in that way, educators will see, will be defensive and see that as a process that they don't want to participate in. And then you end up with, you know, with, with really kind of nothing happening. And in many ways, I think the old system, I think both, when, when I would hear from either teachers or administrators, everyone would agree that this process doesn't do anything to help, to help improve teaching. But it was a process born out of a kind of a defensiveness based on, you know, people wanting to attack teachers and use the evaluation process as a cudgel. So when the union and the district came together and said, we want to do something different in San Diego, we want to actually create a process that is not just about threatening a few teachers, but is about helping all teachers improve and get better for the sake of our students. That was a monumental step forward in what had been a conversation that was negative and not leading us anywhere. And so that partnership to come together and create the E3 model, and then what we see today with the success to date, and now with our piloting, our, you know, we're on the, on the verge of being able to take this to scale, we really do think completely changes the conversation and makes it possible now for teachers to want to participate in this process and for administrators to see this process as a way to help improve teaching and, and help, help improve, you know, the education of our students. So I just want to give you the credit you deserve as being pathbreakers and challenging a narrative that was not helpful and instead replacing it with a, with a, with a program and a, and a process that's going to lead to better teaching in our district that, that everybody can feel like they want to be a part of. So thank you for stepping up and doing that work and challenging what had been, you know, a conversation that wasn't leading us anywhere productive.
Thank you. I also seeing no hands. I, yes, Trustee Patterson.
Thank you, Board President Whitehurst Payne. Well, I just wanted to share my excitement moving in this direction. I think one of the things that Trustee Barrera said earlier that really caught my mind was when he was sharing in his board report, I believe it was the Ocean Discovery Institute, and you talked about how they're, the way, the mindset of how they're teaching these students, right? They're not, they're not focusing on teaching us to get out of gang violence to, to, you're not teaching us to not do something. They're moving in a direction where this is the goal and we're going to help you achieve the goal. And it's so funny that we, I mean, it's not so funny, it's not a coincidence that we recognize that that is a more productive pathway, that when we seek to discipline others, we instill fear, and that's not a productive model of growth at all, right? And I, as a, as a student, I think I struggled to understand that at first, actually, when working with you all, which is something that's been so special for me to be able to go through, right? When I came on, one of the things I ran on was I said I wanted to do student-teacher feedback. And at first it was this, it needs to be mandatory, it needs to be this way. And what I think, Keisha, what you showed me was the fact that none of that's going to work if the teacher doesn't want to improve. And if you create a system of fear and retaliation, that's never going to improve the teacher. And I guess it made me reflect and think, what was my intention in the first place of doing this altogether? And what I came to realize was, I just want better teachers. I want teachers that are feeling like they're achieving their goals, students that see progress and improvement. And when we sat down with my principal and my English teacher and we got to have that conversation, it really opened my eyes to providing the importance of flexibility and really nurturing a teacher to achieving the goals they want to. So as you said, you don't use the word evaluation because it's not really an evaluation anymore. It's how can we help you be the best that you want to be, which has been so helpful to me. So I just want to say thank you to you all for really providing a perspective that I didn't see and helping me grow. And I think creating a better system altogether, I was, I was pessimistic when we started and to get to see that we're actually adding that voluntary component is so, so exciting. Secondly, I wanted to just ask a question. I was interested to know on that website, the PGD, I know you talked a little bit about it before, I wanted to hear what's some feedback you've gotten from teachers and what are some of the thought processes that people are at?
Well, it's a new platform and it's technology and it's, it's, it's a learning curve. It's a steep learning curve. And so that's why we have trainings and supports for them. And we get teachers all the time giving us a call or emailing us, and we go out to schools and, but it's just getting familiar with the platform. The feedback that they give us, we take back. And because we're piloting the MYPGD platform this year, we're going back and we're making modifications, so it's user-friendly for educators as well as for administrators. So it's not cumbersome, but it's a helpful tool to build that collaboration.
No, that's so wonderful and exactly where I think we want to be when we talk about overall improvement. I know as a student, I'm excited to see what this brings forth, and I know I have, I don't think I'm voting on anything, but you have my full support in it.
Thank you. And I believe I saw Dr. McQuarrie first, and then I'll see here.
All right, thank you. So as already mentioned by Trustee Barrera and Patterson, this is a terrific pilot. It's a pilot that required a long-term commitment to address a systemic problem that has long been a problem. So I want to acknowledge the union and the district leadership for recognizing the need for a paradigm shift that enables a professional partnership that supports a collaborative culture in which our teachers can become reflective practitioners in the growth and development process. On my question, could you expand a bit on where we are in building the parallel process for non-credentialed educators?
So all this, last year, I think we started a year and a half ago when COVID, we had just finished a full, you know, we had nurses in the room, we had psychologists, we had counselors, we had speech and language therapists, we had some resource teachers. And we had just come together to talk about what our hopes and our concerns were as we moved forward. And then we started talking about best practices and, and really providing them with what we had done with the classroom teachers and then set a plan for our journey with, with our non-classroom. Then COVID hit and we had to put a stop to all of that. And then this past year, we started meeting with our teams again in Zoom. And so far, we can honestly say that we have, we're ready for our counselors. We've created, we've looked at their access standards and really refined them and chose the best ones to represent what they do here in San Diego Unified. We had a team of 10, you would see in the one last photo, that was our session with our counselors. And they also made some sample goals to provide models. And we are currently working with our psychologist and, and our speech and language therapist, and then our resource teachers that work with adults. So that's who, that's who we've been working with, nurses. I've already spotted Susan Bound Dollar in the hallway, and we said that once things are settled, we want to start connecting with our nursing. They're, they've started. So we're there, but we kind of have to kind of come back together again. Anything else?
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to say that because of COVID, we did get, we did have to postpone our work with our nurses for another year. So unfortunately, we will not be ready for the pilot for our nurses, but we will start that work this fall, again, hoping that the work that they're doing will give them time to do that work. And I did just want to comment on what Trustee Barrera and Trustee McQuarrie have mentioned that I'm very proud of the work that we have done, the district and the union, through leadership changes. We have kept our focus. Many times when leadership changes, sometimes things fall off. And so I'm really proud to say that we both think this work is important and our organizations have found this work to be so important that even through changes in leadership, we've continued this work and we've continued our focus. And we've really kept the focus on this shift in thinking from evaluation to growth and development and really making this a program that's worthwhile to the educators to really have that buy-in, to make that change in their practice in order to serve their students better. So I'm just very proud of the work we're doing and that we continue to do because we really have made a commitment on both sides to see this through to the end while keeping our same focus.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think you give yourself enough credit. Hopefully you'll have the same thing with the change on your side, that we'll continue down the same pathway, just as we did with the district side. Thank you. Did I see Trustee Barrera and then, I mean, Bazal, and then I saw Trustee Beiser. So we'll go in that order.
Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to lift up the program. This is fantastic and it's really a tangible way of looking at positive behavior change rather than focusing more on the negative. And also really looking at where people have their, you know, challenges, but also their strengths and, and helping them to focus on that by incentivizing for the areas that they're strong at and then working on those other areas as well. I just had a question about the growth and development, for example, with the classroom educators. educators. And just to give an example of like, how is that measured and who's doing the assessments? Is it like the principal of the school or, I'm just trying to get a visual of like how the program works? If I'm asked, you know, out in public about the program, like to get a little bit of an idea of how that's, that works with the actual program?
Well, it all begins with teacher self-assessment.
Okay.
The teacher self-assesses where their assets are, their strengths are, and then they start identifying where their areas need. And then they look at, then they look at their student data and what is the student data telling them? What are students struggling with? And so when they look at student data, it's like my students are struggling with X. What is it in my practice that isn't there yet to be able to meet their needs, especially our most struggling students? It's that equity lens. And then they decide, how am I going to take this learning on? And it could be by working with colleagues, it might be taking a micro credential, it might be attending training, collaborating with colleagues. And then they start to decide what are going to be the impacts on my students because of my learning. And that's how you write the goal. I just described what the goal is. And then what they do is they create a plan and then they meet with the principal. And the principal uses a smarte framework and they work together in collaboration to identify and refine their goal. And then there's a mid-year, there's observations, scheduled observations that are very detailed with a lot of reflection, a lot of collaboration, and then some reflective conversations. Those are those informal visits, maybe they want, a teacher comes in with student data and talks about it and it might be connected to their goal. And everything is about aligning their work, their learning to their goal, to their students. And that's what the conversations are about. Then you come to the mid-year check-in and this is a time where principals and teachers can come together and they reassess, the educator reassesses themselves and then the principal assesses them and that with sufficient amount of evidence that they have collected. At that time, that teacher can ask for support or the, or the principal can recommend if they see that there's a need. However, there's also a possibility for that educator to refine their goal to, because they might have been focusing on the wrong thing. And so then there's another scheduled observation, some more reflective conversations, and then there's a summary growth conference. And this, the teacher again reassesses themselves to see the progress, provides evidence of their growth. And then the, the principal again assesses their growth and they come together and they talk about what evidence that they have gathered to really determine the, the growth that they have done or possibly a place where they're not quite yet and then more support is offered. So I've just described the whole cycle.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that and I love that it's so personalized to each individual and also that it's still so focused on student outcomes, you know, as well. So thank you, I really, I appreciate that. That was a great description.
Yes, Wes, thank you. Trustee Beiser.
Yeah, thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. I really want to appreciate everybody that's been working on this over this last many years that we've been engaged in the process of doing what Dr. McQuarrie had mentioned, a paradigm shift away from what trustee Barrera had said, making it not a punitive, one-time, once, you know, once-a-year snapshot, but instead making it about the continuous cycle of growth that educators become accustomed to through our credentialing process. When we become teachers and we get our teacher credential, we go through a BITSA program, or at least I did for two years, where we are constantly reflecting on our practice, making adjustments to get better and then implementing that change and then reflecting, changing, you know, and then it's just a continuous cycle of improvement. I, I'd also like to have people think about it as how you work with a student. If you have a stu, all students, all my students want to do a good job. And so working with students so that they can figure out how that they can get stronger at certain standards is a part of a, an ongoing process where we might review their results from a test, go over the areas where they're weak, work with them on that, and then give them the opportunity to retake the test and raise their grade and do better. And this is the same thing for teachers, where teachers get the opportunity to evaluate their, their performance, find areas for improvement, work on that, and then be, get better. And so that's really what this paradigm shift that Dr. McQuarrie was talking about. And this would not be possible without the, the help of the teachers, our bargaining units and the staff that have been involved in this long process to make sure that we did it right. We could have just thrown something together seven or eight years ago and, and said, this is the plan. But we decided we needed to make sure that it's collaborative, that everybody is going together on this new journey. And so I really appreciate this example of how when we work together, we all can achieve more for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I'm just really thrilled and Keisha, you must be really excited to have accomplished this. I hired you, right? Signed your contract. Okay, very good. Keep on doing good work. All of that aside, yes. I, I just want to say that I started out way back when they had Stell and it was always somebody's doing something to you rather than you're working together to improve the product. And it kind of takes me back to Cal State U.S.A. Marcos when I worked there supervising student teachers in special education and the misconnection that the program required. It required four observations and at that time initially, they were all in the classroom. Well, if you're talking about a resource specialist at the time or educational specialist now, you're not talking about somebody who's only doing classroom work. They are doing assessments, they're doing IEP meetings, on and on and on. And the teachers, the student teachers, the teacher candidates, they know what they need. And so you've got to involve them in the process for the entire job, not just because it's a specialist you're going to, and they're required to improve student learning. You've got to bring it all in and that's why I applaud you for not only looking at teachers in the classroom, but in every aspect, we're all improving. That's how we make the system better, that's how we respond to students as a need arises. So commend you all and thank you and wish you well with whatever you decide to, wherever you're going, you know where you're going next. But anyway, I, I do thank you all for taking on this and moving it forward. And Marisol, I know you left Paradise Hills Elementary School as principal, which was my school also, but you're doing a good job here too. So thank you all. Anybody else? Not? Thank you for the presentation and we'll move on to the next item, which happens to be F1 through 4. And let's see, I need a motion on this one.
I'll move items F1 through 4.
Thank you. Trustee Patterson and the second is by.
All right, seconds.
Was that McQuarrie? Yes, okay, thank you. I don't have any speakers and I'm sure no one wants to say anything. Let us vote, starting with Patterson.
Aye.
Let's go with Dr. McQuarrie.
Aye.
And trustee Beiser. Not hearing you. Trustee Beiser. Michael knock on the door, next door. Anyway, okay, so we'll skip him and come back to, that passes.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. That means that we have unanimously passed with the student concurring. Thank you all. Let's move on to F5. Trustee Patterson, please present this item.
Thank you. Excited to present item F5, a voter engagement resolution. We're having our upcoming primary this June 7th and if you're age 18 or older, you are able to vote. I worked in partnership with Aiden Kleiman, if you want to join us, to talk a little bit about the resolution and your actions behind it. So I'm excited to bring up Aiden from La Jolla High School, who I worked with to bring forth this resolution and he can speak to the exigence behind it and I can clarify anything.
Hi, thank you very much for the introduction, Zach. My name is Aiden Kleiman, I come from La Jolla High School. And I've been doing some internship work for Congressman Mike Levin, if you guys are familiar. And one of the first questions they asked me when I got into the interview was, are you pre-registered to vote? And I thought to myself, am I pre-registered to vote? And I consider myself like a very politically active and involved teenager and I just had no idea what that even meant. And so I did some research and I figured out how easy it was and I thought to myself, is there a way that we could spread this information? Because, you know, teens getting out the vote and voicing their opinions is so important and it's so important as your duty as a civil servant and as, as part of a community and teen voices need to be heard. And I think that this resolution will really accomplish a lot in doing that and getting out those voices and making sure they are heard. Thank you very much.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you so much, Aiden. So just some specifics, what we get to see here is we'll work with communications to make sure that all students have the information on how to pre-register to vote and make sure that's accessible for students. And we're able to highlight in here the ability to get an excused absence if you are of the age of 18 or older and you are looking to vote on the primary on June 7th, which is very, very exciting news. So as we move forward, we know the importance of youth engagement, we recognize that students are in a unique position, being able to have the competency to participate in the process, but oftentimes not being able to have that fundamental right to vote. So once we get to the age of 18 and definitely in that 16 and 17, pre-registering to vote is a critical, critical component and then being able to cast that ballot, so, so important. I'm very excited to be able to present this, along with trustee McQuarrie. Thank you.
Are there any others? Dr. McQuarrie?
Yeah, I want to thank trustee Patterson as well as Aiden for bringing the need for this resolution to our attention and working together collaboratively to prepare this resolution. Thank you, Aiden and trustee Patterson.
Do I have the motion on the floor? Thank you.
So moved.
I'll let you second it. Trustee Barrera got to it first and so you get to be second, trustee Beiser. Okay, and we've not received any public testimony, request. And I just want to say that I totally applaud this. I had the opportunity to go to Crawford High School when the Secretary of State, Dr. Weber, came down and she spoke to the student body and we were there in their gymnasium. And I said to them, you see all these improvements going on, on your campus? That's because the taxpayers voted to, the citizens voted for you to get improved campuses. And so that's what it means to vote. Otherwise, if we, we wouldn't have gotten the money if the taxpayers, the voters had not agreed to give us the money. And you're always asking the question, well, what does it mean to me? It means you get an improved campus, a, a new stadium feel and the building going up and on and on and on. So we were trying to keep it real for all of our students. That's why it's important. So, yes.
No, I just think it's, I, I so appreciate you said that. When we were at the groundbreaking for San Diego High School, one of the students there, Jo, the PTSA president student, she was wearing the shirt from her sister when it had to go on the ballot to even keep San Diego High School there. And you think about the high stakes that are going on, can we keep the campus where it is? And it just speaks volumes, you know, those, they get really, really long come November. And when you pay attention and read through it, it really, really is important. So I appreciate you highlighting that for really those applicable ways that we see government impact us at a local level.
Thank you. And if there are no other questions, let us vote. Trustee Patterson.
Aye.
Dr. McQuarrie.
Aye.
Trustee Beiser.
Aye.
The rest of us will vote electronically. That passes unanimously with the student board member concurring with us. Thank you all for that. And that moves us on to item F6. And we have trustees Barrera and Patterson, please present this item.
Thank you. I'm excited to present, Senate, I'm excited to present a resolution to endorse Senate Bill 1236. Senate Bill 1236, sponsored by Senator Steve Glaser, would grant student, would grant school districts the option to expand voting rights for their student members and would remove the current ban on paying student board members and essentially removing a large, large barrier that prevents a large portion of our students from being able to participate in the process. I wanted to share a few words quickly before we go into public comments, some key things. I, as the student member, of course, this is very close to me, but beyond me, since this position has never been about an individual, it's about the student body at large, this is one of many ways that students can participate in the school board. But one of the big things I want to emphasize is it does set the expectation for our school district. We have students that participate in so many different district committees. We have a student that's a candidate for the student board reelection, actually, that is the chair of the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee on Racial Justice and Equity. And it's really, really incredible. But what we do have to recognize is as this position does set the intention and is in a very visible position, we also see what it's like when there aren't certain rights guaranteed. And I think about my experiences in San Diego Unified and all the time usually as a student, the words you hear are one day. One day you'll be able to participate, one day it'll be your time. And I remember when I said we want to add a student to the Board of Education and create a student advisory board, I, I heard the same thing, one day. And I, I don't think that people knew how fast one day would come for that, but here we are today. And I think about our values as a school district. We've been raised to live in a global community, to fight for justice, to protest, to speak out. These are the San Diego Unified values I was raised on and they're one where we fight for representation and we give representation to all. And just as I've learned about great leaders in my history classes, in my English classes, just as I've seen great leaders on this, on this dais that speak truth to power, that stand up for the rights of the marginalized, I think about the importance of making sure that we enfranchise students and we provide that fundamental right to representation. I hope that some of the work I've done as one student would show that students can be contributing members and that students can be equal members on the Board of Education. And what I, I hope you'll hear in public comment is how students really care about that right to representation and how beyond one member, this position represents the ability to finally give students the voice they deserve. I, I think about the public education system that we're in. We face a system, the first system of government that anybody experiences, where students have 0% of the actual say in the system. And you saw in my video I shared last week where I spoke about the fact that we have zero, we're, we're 100% of the constituency and 0% of the representation. And when I think about that line, despite the fact that I'm sitting here, I mean, the vote is still five board members and the student board member concurs. And as much as I, as much as we as student board members like to say, you know, we're members of the board, we're not in certain ways. And it's important to be cognizant of that and be cognizant of who those constituencies are and grant that right to representation. I'm sure we'll have more discussions, but I want to allow students to speak in public comment.
Okay, that's the presentation. Let's get a, a motion first.
I'll move, I'll move the resolution in support of Senate Bill 1236.
Okay, and second on that?
Second.
Barrera, okay. And now we have some speakers here. And I believe we have six speakers online and three speakers in person. So we'll begin with the virtuals on three minutes. Uh, no, we have 20 minutes total, so just a couple of minutes apiece to include everybody. So two minutes apiece, we must stay under 20 minutes. Let's go off with Jake Zupkov online. Is he available?
Hi there.
Hi. Hi.
Um, I'm, I'm calling in today to just with my support for Resolution F6. I think the interaction between teachers unions and, and, and school districts are inherently set up to neglect student voices and the addition of a student board member too. Our Board of Education has been monumental in, in, in making strides to start to bridge that gap. Not to mention our student board member's been extremely effective over the last two years, helping in, just implement policies that students care about, that affect students' lives, that, that make our district more, more equitable for, for students across, you know, on both sides of the, all across our high schools, middle schools, it's typical. And really, you know, I know this resolution, it's, there's certain caveats. But ultimately, I see giving student board members full voting rights as the culmination of our struggle for, for full representation, you know, in our school districts, making decisions that, that are truly meant to affect us. So I seriously urge you to consider voting yes on this resolution.
Thank you. Alex Mondragon?
Just a moment.
Okay. Followed by-
Hello?
Hello?
Hello. Hi, my name is Alex Mondragon. I'm a current senior at San Diego High and I'm also the co-chair of the swear committee. I'd love for the board to consider to vote yes on Resolution F6 as every single decision that the board makes directly impacts the student body. Zachary Patterson does have a seat at the table, but we want an equitable and equal seat at the table as student voices. Zachary Patterson has to represent over 100,000 students in the district and luckily our representation will double with the addition of two new board members next year. However, the ability to vote and having the option for the board to move to allow the student representatives to vote is equally important to make sure that our representation really does matter. Right now Zachary Patterson has done everything in his power to represent the student voices, but having that voting right instead of just occurring would really, really help to represent the student body accurately and equitably within the district. I would also like to state that currently students are trying to get involved with their district initiatives. There have been several advocacy teams that are attempting to be involved with the district. And supporting this endorsement would also mean that students would feel more engaged with the district and the decisions that are going to directly impact them. It would also increase civic engagement among students to be able to participate in these local form of government throughout the Board of Education and would promote the idea that students really do have a voice within their district and within their school. Thank you and please consider to vote yes on Resolution F6.
Thank you. Arsema Aklog? Followed by Jacob Ricketts and then Leanna Awamoto and then Emily Mamudito.
Hello.
Hi. Arsema?
Hello. Yes, that is me. Uh, thank, thank you so much for giving me this platform. My name is Arsema Aklog and I'm a senior at San Diego High School and was a member of the Superintendent Selection Committee as well. I'm here to show my unwavering support for this Senate bill and to urge San Diego Unified to pass it. You know, as well as I do, that time is money. I'm a friend of the current student board member and anyone who's ever met him can tell you just how much, how much time and effort that he puts into this role. Though, at the end of the day, after hours of listening to student constituents, drafting proposals, visiting schools, attending meetings, and serving as essentially the district's end-all, be-all for all things student-related, he doesn't earn a single dime. The current ban on pay for student board members makes this position extremely inaccessible for thousands of San Diego Unified students. As much as I commend recent efforts to increase accessibility, such as mandating that one of the two student members comes from a school with more than 60% of students participating in free and reduced lunch, this motion can be seen as superficial down the line, if not coupled with fair compensation. We know that San Diego Unified needs more engagement from its low-income students. We also know that these very same low-income students are more likely to have that heavy time commitment, such as taking care of siblings and working to support their family, and are much less likely to apply, apply to positions that require so much time, much more time commitment, even possibly bus rides without any compensation. Real representation means equitable compensation and the district must put its money where its mouth is. In addition, pay is not the only necessity, but voting privileges as well. Making sure that student board members have full voting rights is critical, as it shows that these positions aren't just placeholders and shows that student voices aren't just quote unquote "considered" but rather centered. I urge you to pass this resolution and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jacob Ricketts?
Hello. My name is Jacob Ricketts from Marimeza High School. I am asking the board to vote aye on this Resolution F6. I'm running to be the next student member for the school board and I'm so excited to take this role if I win. Now however, as of right now, my dream of helping and uplifting students is tampered by recognition that this, this position is supposedly not really a member of the board. As of right now, the student board member really just gets a preferential vote, which is counted in the minutes. We often hear the phrase, five members voted aye and student rep concurs. However, it's not able to sway the numerical outcome. What it really should be, if the student member is a real member, is six members voted aye. Imagine voting in an election where voting does not count. That is not a vote at all and makes the position of a student member feel as if it's lower than the adult member. Along with that, by paying student members, it makes the role feel more real. We're student members of the board, not student observers. To be paid is to enforce the idea that this is a real role that makes change for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Leanna Awamoto?
Hi. My name is Leanna Awamoto. Um, I am a junior at Mount Everest Academy and I am the Vice Chair for the Student Wellness, Education and Resources. Student voice is an integral part of the change-making process. This resolution enforcing Senate Bill 1236 would emphasize that student representation is extremely important. The student board member position represents the student body and the ability to vote is essential for our voices to be heard. I urge the passing of this resolution to continue to center student voice, allowing the implementation of full equity. Thank you.
Thank you. And Emily Mamudito? Not there, okay, thank you. We have three in-person people. Lorena Ford, Janice Tan and Jennifer Tran. So it's Janice Tan and Jennifer Tran.
Good evening Superintendent Dr. Jackson, President Whitehurst Payne, Vice President Bazo and Board Members. My name is Lorena Ford and I'm a senior in high school and the Vice President of the Student Advisory Board. And I'm here to speak in favor of Agenda Item F6. Students serving on school boards are just one of, are just one of many avenues through which students can impact their education in San Diego Unified. However, I have come to recognize the importance of the role the student board member plays. This position is so important because it sets the tone and culture for the rest of the district. When the community watches these board meetings, they watch the contributions and impact the student board member has, whether that be work on mental health, sexual harassment or students' rights. They are reminded that students do get to play a role in both their community and their district. They are reminded that students actually, can actually be leaders in our school district. I'm confident that I can speak for students when I say that seeing a student on the Board of Education inspires us. However, it isn't just us. Having a student board member strengthens student voices, student, um, student voice initiatives in our school district. Nevertheless, as people watch the student board member, they also see what is lacking in the role. We should be looking to show that our student voices matter, so much, so much so that we are willing to give real representation. A member on the board without voting rights is no member at all. Senate Bill 1236 offers a way to change this. This resolution gives the district the opportunity to reaffirm their beliefs. That voices of students and student board members matter are just as valid and should and can carry as much weight, weight as the rest of the student, as the rest of the student board members colleagues. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Janice Tan? She's now virtual? Jennifer Tran? In-person, virtual, however. Okay, then that closes it.
Emily's here.
Emily's here, okay, thank you. Emily, please unmute yourself.
Can you, can you hear me? I was on the phone earlier.
Yes, we hear you, thank you.
Sorry, now I'm through my computer. Um, I don't know why it wasn't unmuting me by the phone, so, um, I just wanted to, so one, I appreciate Zach's representation. I think he's really brought a lot to the role and I do appreciate student representation, but I am asking the board to vote no on this and to send it back to Sacramento and maybe look at a way that you could have, maybe one student and also one parent that sent to public vote for all the voters. Because the, the problem I have is it really seems a little bit nefarious in that, you know, just a month ago, you guys voted to allow now two student board members and now you're back, the board is back with a new resolution to say, hey, those student board members get full vote. So we've just moved the San Diego Unified School Board from five board members to seven board members, um, without, you know, two of whom have had no public, the public has not had any input on these people. The, the voters of the San, the districts have not voted for these people and they should not be making decisions that are impactful. I'm sorry, you know, I appreciate student voices, but there is not one parent voice on this board. And the San Diego Teachers Union has already spent $100,000 endorsing their candidates for the board run. You know, how is a parent supposed to compete with that when you say, oh, parents can just run for the school board? That, that's not, that's not realistic. So it really needs to be revised. Vote no, send it back to Sacramento and figure out a way that you can get both student voice and parent voice on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any of the other two?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Janice Tan, okay. Now, virtual?
Hi, sorry, it's, um, there's some technical issues here. Um, my name is Janice Tan and I'm speaking in support of the resolution to endorse Senate Bill 1236. I'm a parent with two children enrolled in district schools. I've been an active volunteer at both the side and district level for the past 10 years. Um, I agree with everything that has been said in support of the resolution and I'm so proud to see the engagement of our wonderful students. I'm honored to present a parent perspective. I'll be blunt, the district and the Board of Education have a massive trust issue with parents. Many families feel that the board is out of touch with the issues that truly matter to families and that decisions are often made with hidden agendas that are never fully or transparently communicated. This is further exacerbated by the fact that none of the current board members have children enrolled in a district school and therefore no one other than the student board member is actually directly affected by the decisions. Even though the board and district claim to gather parent and student feedback, many feel that these efforts are largely performative. Having student members on the board but not giving them full voting rights or equal footing to the rest of the members is simply another example of the board and the district not putting their money where their mouth is when it comes to student and family engagement. To be perfectly honest, I haven't watched many board meetings because they are painfully long. However, of the parts of the board meetings I have been able to attend, I have consistently found myself agreeing with Trustee Patterson's questions and remarks. His is typically the only feedback that I find relevant to my experience as a parent of students in the district because it is his current lived experience. It has therefore been frustrating that his is the only voice on the board that can't actually vote. I believe that Trustee Patterson has shown that our young people can be eloquent advocates for their fellow students and that they can be trusted to share the student perspective, sometimes more accurately than many of the adult board members who are years away from being or even having students in the district. Removing the ban on paying student board members would further promote the equity and access that the board and district report to promote. Instead of simply paying lip service to these ideas, it would be nice if we actually put actions behind our intentions. I urge you to vote in favor of endorsing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one, Jennifer Tran, is she available?
Hi there, yes. Hi, uh, good evening, San Diego Board of Education. My name is Jennifer Tran and I am the Policy Director of the California Student Board Member Association, here to express my unimpeded support for Agenda Item F6, a resolution to support Senate Bill 1236 authored by Senator Glazer and co-authored by Senator Ochoa. The monumental cases of Tinkler versus DeMoyes and the Mohaway Area School District versus BL show that school boards and school board members and student board members have beneficial impacts on school boards of education. Studies won by the University of Chicago this year show that when students believe their teachers, administrators and board members are responsive to their concerns and advocacy, their education improves immensely both in attendance and in academic achievement. Student board members are the prime pathway, especially in San Diego Unified, for students to feel heard by their administration. Especially in SEUSD where low-income students are given a direct representation on their support of education through two, two different student board members. Students want to improve their school districts. They want to be able to fight for mental health and encourage civic engagement within their classrooms and schools. They want to stand beside teachers and staff and administrators and other students in negotiations, budgeting and policy, but they cannot, not when they're barred and designated by the state from a full vote and by nature the rights, legitimacy, respect and information on a Board of Education. The role of the student board member in San Diego Unified has been incredibly responsive and we can see this in the groundbreaking resolutions carried by your very own Zachary Patterson in San Diego Unified. Advocating for student voices means advocating for student board members. School boards can give SBMs motioning abilities, a seat on the dais, mileage compensation and everything that SEUSD already gives their sitting student board member. But as long as the term student board member is preceded by the words preferential voting and as long as they are not provided compensation, students will always lack information. Students will never perform to their highest potential and students will never have the true representation that they deserve. As Zachary Patterson likes to say, there are 6.3 million students in California and students are 100% of the-
Thank you. That ends the speakers that I have on the list. Now let us go to our General Counsel for remarks.
Thank you. President Whitehurst Payne, you had asked that I outline for the board what exactly SB 1236 does. And it does a few things. First, it allows the school district Board of Education to make the student board members have a full vote. So they, we would have seven here, they would be full voting members and it would alter the quorum and the number of votes required to approve an action to four. It would allow the student board member to make and second motions on collective bargaining issues that they're currently restricted from making a motion on. It also allows the board to restrict certain voting matters from the student board member, specifically mentioned in the statute is employee and student discipline, although in this district, we handle those in closed session. The second thing that it does is it allows the board to grant the student board members access to closed session materials and the ability to attend and cast a preferential vote in closed session. However, only students with full voting rights are subject to the Brown Act under 1236, so we could potentially have preferential voting in closed session without the security of the Brown Act. It would also prohibit the board from eliminating the student board member position once established. It would allow, as I said, it would allow when the board makes the student board member a full vote, they, the board could then vote to restrict certain matters. But thereafter, any further action to restrict the voting matters would require a 5-0 vote of the non-student members of the board. It would also allow the district to pay the student board member a stipend and it would require that the pupil's name, contact and biographical information be listed on the website along with the other board members.
What also, just what about the, um, the city charter piece? Is it involved at all?
In my view, if were the board to take action under SB 1236, it would violate the city charter. The city charter specifies the manner of elections for the school district Board of Education. It specifies that we have five board members elected each from a single sub-district, that they be elected at sub-district only primary and general elections, and it requires members of the board to be 18 years old and a citizen of the United States.
Okay, now Trustees, yes, Trustee Barrera?
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne and thank you, Andre, for that analysis of the bill. I, I think the important thing in terms of what this bill does is it allows districts to move forward with the different areas that Andre just outlined. It does not require districts to move forward with any of those areas.
That's correct.
That's right. So the question for us tonight is simply, are we voting to express our support as a school district for state legislation which would make it possible for districts such as ours at the time that we- for districts such as ours at the time that we decided to move forward to allow board, uh, student board members to have full voting rights and to allow student board members to be paid? Those are essentially the questions for us right now, tonight, as a board. It's not, none of what's in front of us tonight is about how we would then go forward and implement, you know, allowing for voting rights for board members, paying board, student board members, any of those, what we would or would not allow student board members to have access to in closed session, what we would or would not allow student board members to vote on. All of that is up to the school board at the time that this legislation would pass and the school board would have the ability to consider those questions. And that may be something that those of us currently on this board would put into place, it may be something that future board members put into place, but, but what that would look like in our district is not what's on the table tonight. So what's on the table tonight is really, I think, a pretty fundamental question, which is, do we, as the San Diego Unified School Board, support the concept that an elected student board member would have full voting rights as they participate in the decisions of this district? I believe strongly that the elected student board member should have full voting rights. What we're talking about is extending representation and extending the voting franchise to a group of people who are absolutely affected by the decisions of our district but who currently do not have full representation or full voting rights. Students are one example of that. There are other examples of that. I believe strongly, for instance, that undocumented parents of students in our district are not represented and don't have the right to participate in the decisions made by this board that affect, affect those families. But students currently, we have a process, which is happening today, where high school students come together, consider candidates for student board, elect now two candidates for student board, which is a great process. But those two board members who are going to be elected today will sit on this board not having full voting rights and not being allowed to be paid, which I think is, is, is also an important issue, especially when we think about students that need to work in order to help support their family. So when I think about this, really the question comes down to, do we feel that students, in this case, high school students, as a group of people, add to our ability to make good decisions if they had full voting rights? We're not talking about any specific individuals. We're talking about as a group of people, do high school students have the ability to make our decisions better if they have full voting rights? If, I, I had the opportunity to go on Saturday afternoon and listen to the roundtable of students who are running for this position. And I have to tell you that I've seen, I told the students this, I've seen a lot of candidate forums in this city for school board, for city council, for county Board of Supervisors, for other offices. I have never seen the quality of a candidate's forum that I witnessed on Saturday. The level of information, the thoughtfulness, the respect that the candidates showed for each other. Any one of those people running for student board would, in my opinion, come to this dais with the ability to strengthen our decision-making if they have full voting rights. This is a high-quality group of people that have a unique perspective, not the only perspective, but a unique perspective that none of us, as adults who are not students in this district, have. It's a perspective from a student about how our decisions impact students in our district. So I strongly support this legislation because it will strengthen our ability to make good decisions as a board. Because we're bringing the unique perspective of students into the full right to vote and participate in our decisions. And quite frankly, we are inviting onto our board people who I have full confidence will make great board members. I think we've seen an example with Trustee Patterson. I think we'll continue to see examples that the type of student that takes the time to run for student board and would invest the time in serving as a student board member will bring, again, a unique perspective, an incredible work ethic, an incredible ability to consider opinions, and, and, and an ability to articulate a perspective that nobody else can bring. So it's not a question of how this happens in our district. It's a question of, do we support the concept of enfranchising students and moving forward? And any time that a group of people in the history of this country has been enfranchised, there are people who will push back and who will say, here's all of the reasons why it's a bad idea to let that group of people fully participate in decision-making. We understand all of the arguments about, you know, why there could be problems if a student is able to have full voting rights, but as a group of people, to expand the ability of students to be represented and to fully participate in our decision-making is in the long tradition of us strengthening our democracy by including new groups of people who previously had been excluded. That's the question in front of us tonight. Our support for this bill sends the message that this board and this school district believe in adding to the representation and enfranchisement of students because it will improve our ability to make strong decisions. So I support this resolution.
Any other board members? Yes?
No, McCrory?
Oh, I'm sorry, I said Vice President Bosso first.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Patterson and Trustee Barrera for bringing this resolution forward. And in looking at it, I wanted to share that, you know, I think a lot of what is, is listed here, you know, I, I do agree with. It's, you know, listing here that students are represented at advisory boards, ASB, Equity Ambassadors, Wellness Education Resources, as well as having our student board members represented here and having two of them, you know, that we're going to have on the board next year. I would even support having students be paid. I don't see that, there being an, an issue with that, especially because it is a big-time commitment and I, I do actually agree with that. But I, unfortunately, I don't support the idea of school board, of student board members having the vote. And the reason why is because I think as a school board representative, we were placed in this position by, by our registered voters and these individuals did not have a say of whether we were going to have vote, student members in. And they've, they've not agreed to this and this is our registered voter public. And I feel that we need to uphold those rights of those individuals because we're the ones responsible to our, you know, the people that are electing us, whether we do well, if we do badly. We're the ones that are in that spotlight. The students are not in that spotlight. I feel that that's something that we take on and that's one of the reasons that we have that vote. You know, and that's our job. And our job is to represent students. When you get on the school board, you're, what you're there for is to be a representative for the students. And we, so the, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I, I have concern if there's two student members from different sub-districts and there's board members from those districts, and I'm not saying that this could happen, but with, you know, I understand all, you're wonderful, Zachary, but that, that could give more sway in certain districts. If you have, you know, a student board member from a high school and the board member from that particular area, they may work together and have more influence. You know, that could be a, a concern as well. And again, it, it's not something that we've had input from the public on. And I also wanted to share that I brought this up to the, our Council of Greater City Schools, which is a organization that represents a large, a lot of large urban school districts nationwide. We have a weekly conference call. And so when I mentioned it, no one else has a voting member, not to say that that's not a reason that we wouldn't look at one, but one of the suggestions that was brought up was that we need to have more representation or, or get that representation from across all the students. Just having one student vote does not necessarily represent, and I know Trustee Patterson is wonderful about getting representation from all the students, but, you know, whether that's gonna, that's always gonna be the case? I don't know. But one of the school board members, who is president of her school board, had mentioned that what she does is she met, she meets with school board, I'm sorry, student representatives from across the district every month and gets input from many of them and brings back, you know, concerns, issues to the school board. And so there's other ways we can include student, get that student representation. I don't think it, we're so focused on this, the vote aspect of it, that I think we're kind of getting away from the fact that there's many other ways we can get, you know, represent, find out what, what it is that our students need. And, and again, you know, we are here to represent them. So I think, the last thing I want to mention is just the time concern. The students are full-time students and that's what they should be. And, you know, especially junior year, you know, even sophomore year, senior year, it's, you know, it's a huge responsibility and we want them to focus on that. And there's a lot of late-light meetings with student, with the board, which I know Trustee Patterson is already involved with, but to take it that next level and get that much more involved, they might not always be able to do that. They might not always be able to make that time commitment and we, you know, want to make sure that we folk, have them focus on what's most important is, is their academics. And so for those, you know, and that might get in the way of board responsibilities. So for all of those reasons, I, I just can't support the resolution because if I support it at the state level, I feel like if it's going to come then to us locally, then I will then have to support it at that level and I'm just not comfortable with doing that right now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, Dr. McCrory?
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. So while I support the spirit and the intent of the resolution and look forward to when students can be equal members on the Board of Education, there are a number of, and there are a number of elements in Senate Bill 1236 that I support. However, I am concerned with other elements of the bill. One that stands out is the fact that was mentioned by counsel that the San Diego Unified School District is chartered with the City of San Diego. And while we can support the bill, it is not clear to me if we could actually take action to implement the bill if it would pass. Therefore, I'm concerned about the integrity issue of supporting an action that could not be implemented without violating our city charter. And, and I'm, I'm asking our counsel to elaborate on the distinction being made by trustee Barrera regarding that we are voting on the intent of the bill but not its actual implementation. Counsel?
What you are being asked to support is legislation that would allow school boards to make student board members full voting members of the board and the associated things that I spoke about earlier. It would not require this board to do it, but it would allow district, excuse me, board, boards in other districts to do so. I don't think we could do it here because we are governed by the city charter.
So, thank you. I, for one, would prefer that we expand the voice of students by lowering the voting age for school board elections from 18 to 16 and allowing 16-year-olds, 16-year-olds and older to run for the school board. While I think the intent is there, I believe that trustee Patterson has demonstrated the value of having the student voice and the, the level of maturity and awareness can be, can be trusted and, and speaks and has improved our, our effort to be a better school district. I am concerned that this particular bill, at this particular moment, would, is, is, raises some of the same concerns that trustee Bosso has mentioned.
Thank you. Trustee Visser, did I see you?
Go ahead, trustee Visser, but I've got a question for.
Okay, I didn't see you. Yes, no?
I'm, I'm listening at this point in time, President Whitehurst Payne.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Yeah, so I just wanted to address some of the questions that trustee Bosso and trustee McCrory just asked. So question for Andre. If this bill passed, would that allow a petition to be made to the San Diego City Council to move an amendment to the city charter forward, which would provide for full voting rights for a student school board member?
I think the only way you could provide for a full voting rights is through an amendment to the city charter. And I think that the, barring other discussions, I think that the city council could move that forward on its own without this bill.
The city council could move a bill forward that would allow for full voting rights of students without state law enabling districts to do that?
I believe so, in which case it would go to the voters.
It would go to the voters.
Yes.
The voters.
Okay. Let me also then just, trustee McCrory's point. In order for 16-year-olds to, to vote in school board elections, would that require state legislation enabling the, the city to then move a charter amendment?
I've never looked at that issue. It strikes me that if a city, city, a charter city has the right to set its own election processes, then it could set its own standard. I'm happy to look at that further. I've never looked at it before, but that's my instinct.
There was an attempt at state legislation a few years ago that Lorena Gonzalez was carrying, attempting to do just that, to enable 16-year-olds to vote in school board elections. It didn't go through the legislative process, but I, I think it was certainly the understanding on her part that in order for the city to move a charter petition that would enable 16-year-olds to vote in school board elections, the state would first need to enable that with legislation. I, I obviously, you know, defer to you, Andre, but I think it's hard to imagine moving a city charter amendment to allow student school board members to have full voting rights without legislation that enables that to happen in California, which is what this bill does.
Again, I'm happy to look at that if you'd like me to. My instinct tells me that the city charter can be amended by the voters of the city and we don't operate under the restrictions on, so we have, in the city charter, students, or, sorry, voters have to be 18 years old and a citizen. I don't think state law would change that, but I don't think state law is required to change that. But again, I've not looked at this. My instinct tells me that that is the case and I'm happy to look at it further, but I don't want to pretend that I have a different answer for you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things I would add to keep in mind, this bill does a variety of things. So if we, as a school district, full voting rights is one component of this. And by changing the state laws, trustee Barrera talks about, it opens an ability for our school board to look at that action in the future in alignment with the city charter. But beyond that, we talk about the ability to cast a preferential vote beyond what is currently allowed, the ability to have access to different sessions of the Board of Education when we talk about the evaluation of the superintendent or, or processes like that where the student board member wouldn't conventionally be considered to be a member of the school board. And these are all actions that would be able to be taken beyond that full voting right component and that also includes that aspect of mileage reimbursement, which is a key component of it, or not mileage reimbursement, excuse me. We're looking at that idea of being able to pay stipends to the student member, making the job more accessible. All things that we, as a school district, can do without moving to that full voting component. That's the point of this bill. It's flexibility for the school district to move in the direction that they see fit. And one of the other things that I would mention, I would ask us to also consider the fact that there are actually voting. the fact that there are actually voting student members. There are voting student members all across the state of Maryland, and there are voting student members on, I believe, 11 different state boards of education across the United States. These members play an active role and participate in the same capacity. In the case of the state of Maryland, where you look at Anarindale County, which has had a full voting student member since 1975. That's enfranchisement right there. That's saying that the students have an actual representative that is hearing them. And I hear all of my colleagues, and the one thing I would say is, you've all been removed from the education system as students for many years. And what we as student members bring to the board is that perspective recognizing that, I mean, in reality, I'm the only member of the Board of Education that directly experiences the effects of the decisions we make. And a fundamental idea of the right of representation is being able to play an impact on the decisions that are made. And we don't have that. And yes, you can play students in other roles. Yes, you can see other ways that you can attempt to enfranchise students, but when you can't see the value of the governing board of a school district actually giving representation to students, then you don't see students for what they are. And those are contributing members of society that can actually make an impact on the education system. I think about what I've learned in San Diego Unified. I think about all of the different leaders that I've seen that have fought for representation. And the one thing I will say is, once you open something, it can't be put back. And once we advocate for full voting student members, we're gonna keep fighting to get there. So this resolution might not define that. It took the state of Maryland and Montgomery County, it took 41 years to get full voting rights, and they continue to come back year after year after year. And we care about representation because I believe so fervently that students deserve the same rights and the same ability to impact the education system. And the education system, the first system of government that a student experiences, they have no ability to formally impact that. We just passed a resolution in support of voter engagement because we said that voting matters. And yet we can't even do that for our own very students and actually give them the right to representation. The student board member concurs is not the student board member being a member of the Board of Education. And while I hear concerns, I hear reasons why it can't be done, I would remind my colleagues that we will continue to fight. We believe in the right to representation and we're not gonna give up. So I would ask my colleagues to reconsider, and I do think it is very, very unfortunate that after two and a half years that I've served on this school board, that we still don't see that value enough to where I could be a participating member and beyond me, that any student could be a participating member. Because we talk about agency, we talk about all students graduating with the skills, motivation, curiosity, and resilience to succeed, to lead and participate. We're not showing that we're having students that are leading.
Thank you. And we've heard now from all the members, and I guess I need to weigh in on this.
I've got a rebuttal here.
Okay, Dr. McQuary?
Yeah, so I also support the enfranchisement of students and support student representation on the board as a goal. I think we need to get there, and the sooner we can get there, the better. I'm not sure this is the means. So it's how do we get there, I think is important. My sense is that we need to get there by first going through the city, and it's probably the city charters we're gonna have to deal with in the long run. And I'm thinking we need to start with the city charter as opposed to ending with the city charter. So we need to establish that conversation with the city, and then that will also allow us to have the community to chime in and make it a voting, and put it on the ballot in the future to allow 16-year-olds to vote as well as to run and sit on the school board.
And Dr. McQuary, why do you think we need to start with the city charter specifically? What's wrong with the, what's wrong with starting with the state law, right? This impacts the thousand school districts in the state of California that, which many of them are not charter cities. Obviously, we are, and there are numerous things that we can do in this bill, but why would we not support this just because we think the city charter needs to be amended first?
Yeah, so I agree with the spirit, and I agree with the end outcome. I would like to have council take a look at the city charter to see what the implications would be before taking action. So I suppose, I would be suggesting that we table until after city, after council has an opportunity to take a look at that.
Thank you. Everybody's finished, ready to hear my opinion, or you don't want to hear it? The whole city charter issue is a concern for me. I don't understand why, when we went from the structure we had, we didn't move forward at that time with 16-year-olds voting. We could have easily put it on the ballot at the same time and had the citizens, the voters, to weigh in on this. So I'm uncomfortable with this. Also, if we're talking about high school students being represented, there are some elementary students, there are some middle school students. There was an elementary student who was on, who was interviewing president, was it the president about an issue, and she interviewed the mayor, and there's one here, right here in San Diego, in the Canyon Hills cluster. So when you start, why are we stopping at 16-year-olds in the high schools? Why not give those students, even younger than that, the opportunity? I think that this needs some more research. We need to look at the city charters, issues in relationship to this, the state, we've gotten an opinion from the council. I, when I was at Cal State U, San Marcos, there was a student there who was very young, so he was a member of a school board, I believe it was in Warner Springs or someplace right here in San Diego County. And I don't think he was, he was not that old because he went to college early. So I just think that we need some more models. I'm glad to hear Trustee Patterson say that he's not going to give up, because I would be disappointed if he did. I mean, then you would not have learned that you might not get your way the first time, but you go back and you look at it again, and you come back, and you bring it forward again. But I'm not comfortable with voting for this this evening. And if that's it, let us vote, and we'll start with the student trustee.
I believe there was a motion with Dr. McQuary on the table, was that correct? You had mentioned, Dr. McQuary.
I had suggested that the decision be tabled until after we hear from council, but it would have to require the maker of the motion and the second to move that forward. So I think the ball is in your court.
It's Patterson and Barrera were the motion makers. So if one of you wants to pull it to allow us to table this, then that's one way to go, or we need to vote this motion up or down.
I don't understand what we are asking council to do. Could you clarify that, Dr. McQuary?
I would ask council to review the city charter and provide us with guidance in terms of what we can and cannot do, and how we would be able to proceed if we chose to lower the voting age to 16 for a school board member and to allow a 16-year-old to sit on the school board.
And I can answer that now. Those two things would require an amendment to the city charter.
So we don't need to table it because of that reason? Let's, let us vote, unless there's more discussion?
Yeah, President Whiters-Pain, I just did have a couple of questions. Maybe this would be better directed towards general counsel. Are we not able to pay students on the board in an advisory capacity as paid interns?
We could probably try to figure something out. Currently, the statute as written specifies that we can pay them for mileage only, and it does not allow for payment of a stipend.
But it couldn't be for an internship or maybe a government kind of internship or anything like that?
If there was a parallel assignment, perhaps, we'd have to look at that as well. There would be no prohibition because, well, let me back up. If the student becomes a full voting member, there would likely be an issue. As we currently sit, there would be no issue of being an employee of the district and also serving on the board. So we could look at something like that.
Right, 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 okay. And then the other question I had is, you know, if the voters were to vote to change the number of full members to seven in, say, a charter, would, would, would there be any, I mean, let's just talk about currently. I think Trustee Bozzo had raised a little bit of a concern, what if two, what if both students came from the same high school, and then along with that trustee from that sub-district, then that sub-district community would potentially have three votes on the board, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. You know, this is a very interesting conversation that we're having. Since the last time we actually had a meeting, we had a very long dialogue about increasing the number of student members on the board from one to two, and we went forward with that dramatic change. One of the things I'm a little bit concerned about is this board falling into the same trap that we've observed over the last many years, where we make large changes, huge changes, without a thorough engagement of the parents and the community members, the voters in the San Diego Unified School District. I mean, I haven't had the opportunity to visit with parents or educators or voters about changing the composition of the board from five to seven full voting members yet. I don't know to the best of my knowledge that we've had this kind of conversation in communicating these ideas by clusters, in cluster meetings, or in school meetings, or any kind of parent meetings. We haven't talked to our advisory councils about this idea of going, of changing the permanent composition of the board from five to seven. And I understand that Trustee Barrera has said that, you know, that by voting for this resolution, we don't change anything in San Diego Unified at this juncture. And that these kinds of concerns and things about the age, because right now, we could have two people on, two students on the school board that are not 16, they could be 14 years old. Four, two 14-year-old full voting members. And so I know that the candidates that Trustee Barrera and Zach demonstrate are incredibly professional, very mature, but we have to establish a form of government that creates a system of checks and balances in the event that we may have two students that do get elected that are 14 years old, that maybe aren't model examples such as Zach or the current candidates that are running. So I think there's a lot of issues and concerns that are at play. And so I think at this point in time, I think that sometimes you have to go slow to go fast. And I think that we need to make sure that we, I just get the sense that this is all just happening way too fast, and that there are so many questions about the intricacies of changing the composition of our board or other boards and who's eligible. There's just way, way too many questions at this point in time to move forward. I think we need to take a deep breath, pause, and look at the opportunity to explore paid internships for our student board members. We need to engage our community, we need to listen to our voters and our parents and our community members before we continue down barreling on this road. I absolutely agree with the idea of increasing the enfranchisement as a teacher in the classroom. I love listening to students about how I can do better as a teacher, how we can do better as a school, and I really value Zach's input and insight and the increase in other student representations on our boards and councils and advisory committees, and hope that we can figure out, how do we come together on this? Because I think we are all wanting to go in the same direction. We just have to figure out, what is that path forward? And I'm not sure that this is the path that we want to embark upon at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach?
Yeah, well, right, just as, just as we say, Trustee Barrera and Zach, right? A great shining example that we continue to do over and over again, where we say I'm an equal member of the board, we say that student members are equal, are what we want for our school district, and yet we don't show that same respect, yet we don't show that value. And I guess as a student, we, I talk with my association about our three Ds of student suppression, our delegitimization, demonization, and double standard. And I think it's a double standard to say that we are somehow less qualified. I would, I would think about the only student member that has ever won vice president of a board of education, and yeah, it has happened. And she said that she wanted to be judged not by her age, but on the merits of her voice, and the fact that she saw equality in her ability to participate and be seen and heard in that level. And being seen and being heard means that you actually have that authority and that power to do that. And this position seeks to represent students, and I think we have a board, we as a board have a lot of work to do if we actually want to represent students, because we're not there yet. And unfortunately, what I see tonight is I don't think we're too close.
Okay, if there's no, Trustee Barrera?
Thank you, President Whiters-Pain. The last point that I would just make, and you know, we've had a discussion, is that if we do not support this legislation going forward at the state, I am very confident that this conversation will end tonight. I have no confidence that without the ability at the state level to then, at the local level, decide the direction that we want to take, that we will move this idea forward in any way. So I just think if we want to say that we want to look at this in different ways and attack it in different ways, the starting point to do that is to support legislation that would allow us to do that. Without that legislation, we will not move forward with a conversation about how to get to full enfranchisement of students. I just think that's the reality.
Thank you. Any others want to comment? Otherwise, let us vote, and we will start with Trustee Patterson.
Aye.
Okay, and we move on to Trustee Visser. We'll come back to you, Trustee Dr. McQuary.
No.
Okay, are you ready yet, Trustee Visser?
I'll vote aye.
Okay, Trustee Bozzo? Oh, wait, that's right, I'm sorry. I'll push the buttons. Oh, wait, I'm voting no. That's a no for me. Did we get it right?
No.
Do it again, okay. So we have Visser with an aye. What's our total vote here? Aye for him and no for McQuary. So we have three noes and two ayes with the student voting aye. Did I say that right? So that fails? Okay. As I said, I do expect it to come back again, and I'm sure it will, just as it took them in Maryland to do it. Over time, it will come back, and some of these questions that we have will be answered. Thank you all for this. This was a very impassioned discussion among the members. Let us move on now to item G1, the Delax and I Annual Update to the Board. And we have Francisco Arceo. Would you please provide your report? And afterwards, we will have the follow-up from the district people.
Thank you. Good evening, board trustees. President Whitehurst Payne, Superintendent Jackson. My name is Francisco Arceo. I am a father of Frank Arceo, who attends Valencia Park Elementary School. And I am a D-LAC parliamentarian. Tonight, I am presenting our D-LAC Semiannual Report. Our D-LAC board members are Lalia Ayali, who could not be here tonight, Valentina Hernandez, Anayeli Guillen, and myself. I look forward to serving on D-LAC board for next school year as well. Tonight, we have a few items we would like to highlight and celebrate. I'd like to recognize our district for the collaboration and support for refugee families. We now, we know the several district departments work in our community organizations to provide support services to our students and families. We appreciate that our resource teachers were on-site at the start of the school year supporting our multilingual learners. We are pleased to report that we had an increased attendance at our D-LAC meetings, since they have been virtual. We plan to continue to provide that option as a way to give more families access to the important topics we covered. Most importantly, we want to highlight the great relationship and collaboration we had with our district leaders. Our chairperson has the opportunity to meet with our superintendent, chief of staff, and Marissa to talk about the support for English learners district-wide. The next few slides showcase some of the data we had requested from the district in order to better understand the needs of the English learners and how we as a D-LAC committee can support, while also allowing us to provide input and make some recommendations to you tonight. As I mentioned before, attendance at our D-LAC meetings increased during our virtual sessions. We are looking forward to ways to bring engaging topics to this meeting to keep our participation rates. We will, however, avoid the Cinco de Mayo meetings, since we learned this year that many people prefer to go out and celebrate than attend our meeting this month. So this slide shows how our students perform an assumitive English learner proficiency assessment over the past four years. We noticed in 2020, the overall proficiency levels went down, and in 2021, we're starting to see a higher proficiency levels, comparable to the pre-pandemic scores. We do not have a cumulative LPAC score for this year. We will report on that in the fall of 2022, 2023 year. But we're predicting that we will see an increased proficiency levels now that our students are back and school, in schools with the opportunities to engage with their peers and learn the language. This slide shows our attendance rates as a district. Historically, our English learners have had a lower attendance rate than all students. This is an area of concern. For us and our D-LAC meeting this month, we talk about, to our parents about the importance of sending their kids to school. We had brainstorming sessions in breakout rooms to talk about ideas of how to improve attendance at each of our schools. Long-term English learners are students who have been in our school for six or more years, and have not been reclassified to English proficiency, which limits their access to electives when they get, when they get to secondary. Prior to the pandemic, our rates were much lower than the state average, and we see in 2020, the percent for long-term English learners increased nearly 10%. We had a correction in our percentage. This year, 14% of our students are classified as a long-term English learner and have hopefully, and we are hopeful that with the current cumulative LPACs, our students will qualify to be reclassified this year. Our Office of Language Acquisition has invited us to be part of the LTAC Task Force to develop our planned support to students. This slide shows the percentage of students we have reclassified to fluent efficiency proficiency over the last three years. You will notice that we had a huge increase, and this is really great to see. We currently have close to 2,300 students that scored a Ford on LPAC and are eligible for reclassification if they meet the rest of the criteria. Many more will qualify with the current cumulative LPAC test in progress. We want to celebrate that our biliteracy pathways for our students have allowed students to earn this recognition, and the number of continues to increase. The Office of Language Acquisition continues to support our students, our school, in building pathways to allow more students access. Recommendations. With that, on behalf of D-LAC, I'd like to make the following three recommendations to the board. I will go over each one of them the next few slides. Due to the high number of long-term English learners, we would like to recommend the following. Built upon the cultural and linguistic assets of English learners, instead of focusing on the English learner deficiencies, understand and address the unique needs of the English learners population at each school site. Focus on a high-quality program and service that address both language and culture. Provide multilingual and culturally competent health and wellness support services to the students and families. Develop authentic and meaningful relationship with all parents and guardians. Provide high-quality and effective professional development for educators. Hiring of high-quality teachers reduces the class size, especially at schools with the high numbers of English learners. Make the resource teachers 11-month employees to help in the summer by making sure all English learners are in, are correct, are incorrect classes assessment leveled up in the summer program. It is important that information about the changes to high school courses and curriculum changes are communicated to the parents in their home languages. Many changes in our district are not communicated to the parents, and we cannot support our students to help guide them if we do not have what they have access to. Trauma affects refugee students' social-emotional well-being and readiness to learn. We recommend the district ensure that they are being provided with counseling services, curriculum materials, after-school opportunities, high school credit recovery, alternative schooling. I wanted to thank you for taking the time to listen and consider our recommendations. I am proud to serve the D-LAC, and will continue to work with our District Office of Language Acquisitions to support our families. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we'll have our, just sit right through, yes? Thank you, and we'll have our staff.
Thank you, Francisco. And thank you to the entire D-LAC Committee for your semiannual update, the time that Lalia spends with us on a monthly basis. I think those conversations are getting us closer to the partnership we need for our students. And so, I want to thank you for the recognition, but also the recommendations. And now, we have to follow through on those recommendations so that we can support our students. One of the things I know we talk about is the importance of supporting our students before they become long-term language learners. Many of our students do start with us in Universal TK or Kinder, and that is a concern of ours. And so, now I'd like to ask the Office of Language Acquisition and Marissa Allen, as well as Kelly Shoresman, I think she's here, and Dulce Caldwell, both instructional coordinators who will present on behalf of the district in terms of our response to what we just heard from the D-LAC Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And you don't see them, but they're sitting right behind me. Both Kelly and Dulce, thank you. Good evening, trustees, Superintendent Jackson, and President Whitehurst Payne. With me tonight, I do have Kelly and Dulce, who are instructional coordinators that are really great team members that have put together this data for our D-LAC parents to be able to analyze and, and be here in support of all of the actions and services that we, we take as a district to support our English learners. So I want to thank them also for their service. I'd like to take the opportunity to give appreciation to our wonderful parent leaders, and tonight in particular, to Mr. Arceo for presenting for the first time in front of a school board on behalf of the D-LAC Committee on short notice. We have been working together, we have been working together to create very engaging sessions for our D-LAC Committee parents. Those sessions are important to be engaging in order to increase the attendance and provide valuable information to our parents and families regarding multilingual families. So I forgot to skip the slide. There we go. So on May 5th, Cinco de Mayo, as, as Mr. Arceo mentioned, we did have our, our last D-LAC meeting, and we had the opportunity to celebrate Valentina Hernandez, who is our D-LAC vice-chairperson. She has been serving San Diego Unified School District for over a decade. She now has a senior and is on her way out of service from D-LAC. So we provided her with a plaque and, and took pictures of her, delivered the plaque to her home. And it was, it was really special to be able to recognize her. I also want to highlight our monthly meetings with our chairperson, our superintendent, and chief of staff and myself. These meetings have provided us with a consistent way of communicating and consistently collaborating on items that address the needs of our English learners, discussing next steps and possible solutions to some challenges that arise. One example, I want to give you two examples tonight, but one example of how our partnership has benefited our students is with the influx of refugees. As a district, we quickly mobilized with several departments and community organizations to create a plan and a structure of support, addressing the variety of very complex needs of these families. And being able to work with Lalia at these collaboration sessions really gave us some insight as to how we could serve these families, and we immediately put into action some of her recommendations. Another example was taking actionable steps in communicating with key staff at our school sites to ensure that we were capturing all qualified students for the Seal of Biliteracy. And what that created was an increase in the number of recipients for the Seal of Biliteracy. Next, in response to D-LAC's recommendations to the board, we would like to explain how we are addressing each one. There are three topics that we will go over tonight, and they are listed on, on this slide. Our plans to support English learners are centered around our best practices for multilingual learners and the California roadmap vision. This graphic that you see here shows the four practices. D-LAC's recommendations are aligned to our current practices as follows. Recommendations numbers one through four are addressed through our assets-based and individualizing for the whole child practices that you see here on the left. Recommendations number five through nine are addressed through our daily designated and integrated ELD instructional practices. In the next couple of slides, I will go over what these look like. We want to start by acknowledging that the term "long-term English learner" is a problematic one. It puts the responsibility of success on the students when it is our system that has the responsibility to ensure their, their success. To target the unique needs of these students, we have placed resource teachers at sites with large populations of long-term English learners. They work in designated ELD classrooms with groups of students to engage in goal-setting with specific measurable outcomes tailored to each individual need. These goal-setting sessions help to inform the work being done with these students in small groups. We are also identifying students by class, by name, and by need. In the past, our LE resource teachers were focused on building capacity at the sites with professional development and working alongside teachers to implement strategies to accelerate language learning. Next year, we will continue to provide district-wide PD in the area of designated ELD focused on high-impact strategies. Our resource teachers will shift the majority of their work, their workday in providing small-group targeted instruction with our students based on the need, utilizing data to inform them. We will provide leaders with the training and tools to monitor data and conduct walkthroughs that are focused on quality indicators of designated ELD, looking at the student actions, the teacher actions, and the room environment that supports language learning. We will work with our area superintendents so that walkthroughs are focused on providing feedback on the practices for long-term English learners and those at risk of becoming long-term English learners in order to be proactive. As a system, we need to engage our educational partners to identify additional areas where we can support these students. As Mr. Arceo Francisco mentioned earlier during his presentation, the Office of Language Acquisition is forming the LTAL Task Force that will bring together student, parent, and educator voices to help with the formation of a multi-year plan of support that will increase the number of students who reclassify in a timely manner, reducing the number of students identified at, at risk of becoming long-term English learners. This year, we provided targeted supports to meet identified needs of English learner students. Based on our LPAC reading and writing domain scores, it was important that we address literacy instruction for our English learner students. To do this, we built upon the Literacy Acceleration Plan to provide professional development specific to literacy and language for students in grades three through five. It was impressive, and the PD that we provided was provided to over 1,000 teachers who attended these trainings every month. We provided professional development to ensure teachers provided highly effective designated ELD instruction. And this work will continue through next school year. Finally, we wanted to provide additional opportunities for students to practice their English and literacy skills. And we have over 12,000 students that are accessing Imagine Learning, and 630 students who are accessing Lexia English Programs, which are online platforms that work at the student's level to increase their language proficiency skills. They have access to these programs in school and also outside of the instructional day. Our D-LAC expressed a concern regarding district-wide communication to parents about curriculum and course changes in high schools. This is an area that we do need to strengthen. Currently, all course changes are done through the ICC process, which is called the Interdivisional Curriculum Committee. And that results in items being available through public board meetings. Course change information is communicated primarily at the site level through the articulation process. However, there are some courses and curriculum changes that have included extensive district-level communication. For example, you'll recall the Enhanced Math, which has done sessions in every cluster. The Extended Learning Opportunities Department has been working with our college partners to offer symposiums for parents. to offer symposiums for parents. In order to strengthen our communication in this area, our department will be collaborating with the Extended Learning Opportunities Department and Curriculum and Instruction to revisit the process and the way that we communicate these changes to our families in order to take the necessary steps to improve in this area. We are also planning to use the A- through G grant for graduation plans for every student starting much earlier than in the past. These plans are known as post-secondary plans, and we will be starting with ninth graders versus 11th and 12th graders. So as we keep talking about building student agency, they become a part of that at an earlier age. Our district, in regards to communication, translations, and interpretation recommendations from D-LAC, our district is really doing a phenomenal job with our translation interpretation services. We have made a significant investment in providing translation services in response to the needs of our families in our district. Some of the supports that we are providing are listed in this slide. But I'd like to highlight that we do have four district staff members that provide direct translation in Spanish, Vietnamese, Somali, and Cambodian. In addition to that, we do contract out services to provide translation in about 15 to 20 other languages as needed. And although the state only requires translation services if there's more than 15% of the school population needing it, we make an effort to provide these services whenever they are requested. In fact, during our last D-LAC meeting, as Mr. Arceo mentioned, we held breakout sessions with the parents to allow us to really engage the parents in the ideas of problems of practice related to ELAC participation, attendance, and supporting our long-term English learners. And in each breakout room, we had an interpreter in order to enhance the dialogue and help us improve our strategies and build our toolkits of support for our families. In order to support our refugee students, we have been able to have constant communication with resettlement agencies. We have held newcomer professional development sessions and collaborated with children and youth in transition with a newcomer specialist from Escondido Unified, along with our instructional coordinator who's been assigned, Carrie Shetler, in providing PDs for our staff members on how to support our newcomers. We have had over 50 teachers attend these sessions. We also offer office hours, and those are one-hour sessions for teachers or leaders at the sites to just join us and ask questions about how they can continue to support their newcomers, offering one-to-one planning and coaching sessions for teachers and newcomers as well. You'll be happy to hear that over the summer, we will continue offering a course called Supporting All Newcomers during our MLL Expo, that's Multilingual Learner Expo, taking place this summer. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight, and we are committed to the partnership that we have with our D-LAC parent group to improve our English learner outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, both of you, for this presentation. Let's see, we have no speakers on either one of these. So let's hear from the board, the trustees. Trustee Pfizer.
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. I really want to thank the folks at D-LAC committee for their presentation and all their hard work and their recommendations. I also was kind of curious, what kind of student representation do we currently realize on the D-LAC committee, and how could we make that better?
That's a great question. Other than, these meetings do take place in the evenings, and so the only student participation that we have had has been very informal in nature, but it's definitely something that we can explore.
And we do have a position for a board member, a student board member, on our D-LAC committee. We don't currently have that filled, but we are going to work to get it filled, and hopefully someone on our LTAL Task Force would be interested, so we're working on that.
Thank you. Other trustees? Comments? Trustee Barrera?
Yeah, thank you, Francisco, and thank you for the staff presentation as well. Like we talked about last time with the CAC and the staff, it seems like we're on the same page in terms of identifying, you know, these three priority areas that we want to address. And so having the detailed strategies that staff is presenting around all three of these areas seems consistent, although I wanted to ask, Francisco, does that, what you heard from the staff presentation, is that consistent with the recommendations coming forward from D-LAC?
Definitely, that's been consistent. Like I said, one of the...
Can you go plug the other?
Yes, it has been very consistent. You know, during our meetings that we have, you know, having that engagement, you know, we've been doing a lot of question and ask, you know, Q and A, trying to see how can we improve. I'm a new member. My son actually is a ETK. So, you know, at the beginning, I did not know exactly what I was getting into.
I bet.
But now, after being and seeing the involvement and seeing how parents, you know, a lot of the times, it's not knowing what to ask.
Yeah.
And I think having, you know, the staff be able to help, you know, be able to not just translate one particular language, but multiple different languages, and seeing that engagement, you know, I think has been very powerful in the terms that we want to get more engaged, you know, we want to be able to get those answers.
Yes.
So now getting your support definitely would help.
That's great, thank you. That's great. And I guess the other question that I just had is, so the LTAL Task Force, I mean, obviously, we've got, we've had for many years, strategies in place to support long-term English learners. What are some of the key improvements that you can imagine coming forward from the work of the LTAL Task Force?
Really, we want to bring the task force, have the student and the parent, and also the leaders at the school sites, what they're seeing as a need.
Yep.
You know, historically, it's something that we're trying to address with our long-term English learners, and what we want to see out of this task force is something different. How can we address the families differently in making sure that we're providing support? And Mr. Arceo mentioned one thing, we don't know what questions to ask.
Right.
And so we need to guide that conversation so that they're able to ask and that we're able to provide that guidance, and then come up with a multi-year plan of action to support the outcomes for our students.
Exciting, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just found it. Trustee Baso?
Yeah, thank you also for the great presentation. It sounds like you guys are really reaching out in different ways and, you know, really trying to, you know, lift up our English language learner students in maybe ways that we weren't doing before. I just had a question about, I think, in the first presentation, it was looking at attendance, looks like it's a little lower for the EL population, and what kinds of things you might be doing to kind of help with that, because that would obviously involve, you know, getting, working with the parents and seeing what's going on at home, whether or not coming to school. And also, it has the total number of long-term English learners at 35%. That was 21, 22 numbers. Is that better or worse? I mean, is that compared to the year before? I can't tell because it just has the one year there, so I don't know if that's, you know, for progressing or where we stand right now.
Thank you. I was hoping that you would ask that question about the attendance. And that was actually Slide 8 of Mr. Arceo's presentation, and I'm happy to report that there is a district plan that is going to be rolled out next school year. And it is a restorative plan for addressing chronic absenteeism. And so what we have found, and one of the things that was presented at our Equity Conference recently, was that in order to improve attendance at schools, you have to build a relationship with the families. You have to know the students by name, the parents, what they're struggling with, what are the barriers for bringing their kids to school. So within that plan, and there's lots of details to the plan that I don't have, but I know that there's a plan that's going to be rolled out next year, and it's really going to be restorative-based practices in regards to attendance. These are also ongoing topics that we address during our D-LAC meetings, and that should also be addressed at every single ELAC meeting at the school sites, because it is part of their legal requirements to do so. The other slide, I believe it was Slide 9, is that correct, of the presentation? Slide 10. Okay, Slide 10, there was a correction here, and Francisco did mention the correction, but I wasn't sure it was captured. The number up at the top, 2,453 long-term English learners, is accurate, but the actual percentage is not 35%, it's 14%. So if you go back to Slide...
Thank you, yeah, I didn't catch that.
Uh-huh. And if you go back to Slide 9, it was 14% back in 2018, then 16, then 26 in 2020, 26% in 2020, so that's also a correction if you don't have it already on your slide. And then most currently, 14%.
Dr. McCrory?
Yeah, true. So like Vice President Baso, I am also concerned about chronic absenteeism, as well as the trauma experienced by our refugee students and their families. And while our schools are making an effort to address the academic needs, we know that the whole family services, we know that whole family services are necessary, requiring a coordinated effort by the city, county, and community organizations. We, as a school, cannot do everything. We need to collaborate and work with our city, county, and community organizations. So I know that the students' social-emotional needs, their mental and physical health needs, and the social and economic needs are identified by Maslow as critical, basic needs. I think we need to address the basic needs while we are attempting to address the academic needs. I think the basic needs come first. So I'm wondering, what county, city, and community agencies are we partnering with to help us address these pervasive whole-family needs?
Well, I would say, just as you said, a school district can't do it alone. As a department, we really rely on children and youth in transition. They partner with a number of community agencies, resettlement agencies, and have been amazingly supportive, especially with these refugee population. So we can get more specifics on the organizations that we've connected with, but they play a huge role in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, first of all, commend our parent here from Valencia Park, my school. I know, I always brag about my schools, right? But thank you for being here, thank you for taking on that responsibility to step up at the last minute, it sounds like, and we did a great job with that. Thank you. And I want to say that I have always enjoyed going to the reclassification ceremonies, and I've missed that during the COVID. Zamarano, I was a standing, a standard speaker there, and Hamilton, and some of the other schools, but of course, the pandemic said, no, you can't go out there. But I look forward to us getting back into having those ceremonies, because the girls would dress up, and it was very nice to see them excited about graduating with their, I mean, promoting up through that reclassification. And earlier, you mentioned something about you're moving it down to the ninth grade rather than the 10th, 11th. I was wondering why you didn't move it to the eighth grade?
In regards to the, oh, the A- through G requirements and plans for graduation?
Right.
So that is something that the Department of Child and Youth in Transition, I'm still learning all the acronyms, is in charge of, they're going to be rolling out that plan. I don't know the particulars as to why that was chosen, but we can find out and get back to you.
Yes, years ago, the state said they ought to be making plans earlier than the ninth grade, because when you get in the ninth grade, then you are taking classes that will lead towards graduation versus if you just start doing your plans then. So if they can make the plans in the eighth grade, they're set up so that they can understand directly what they need and move forward with that. So just an observation, and this is just a presentation, and I just want to say thank you for all of your time, thanks staff, and I thank you for working together. That's the key to it all. We can do better, more things for students when we work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. And with that, takes us down to item G2. Thank you, Trustee Barrera, in the second unit. Vice President Baso? No, yes, I think I did see G2. Emily Move to? Is that who she is? Is she available, virtual? Yes, she's available? Three minutes.
I'm here. Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me? Are you calling?
Yes, we hear you, please speak.
And you're my daughter. Yeah, it's Emily, mom of two. Yeah, sorry, now she's caught me on the phone, she's going to follow me around. So I just, what I wanted to comment on was G2 and also G3, but specifically G2 because it was the COVID relief money. And, you know, so when you look at the document, it has some specifics on here, I just lost. It's something like non-classroom, IEP service providers, weekly services, $200, you know, a stipend of $500, 412 classroom educators, one hour a week pro-rata pay. And it's $2 million, it's a big amount. And so I guess what I'd like to just ask is that when I talk to parents, they don't feel like the COVID relief money has been helping their students and helping their students with learning loss. And I'm asking the district if we could please get something as equally specific and, you know, individualized, like, so there's a pro-rata for a student, you know, an extra hour for a teacher to stay each week, but how many students got helped by that, like individual students, not, you know, not like 36 because six students got help with me? But, you know, how many individual students are getting extra support because of these things? Because it's, everything is just, we're just seeing piles of money that the board is approving with no breakdown of how it affects students. So that's what I'm asking for, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, more discussion? Let us vote, and Trustee Patterson?
I'm on vote.
Isn't that, I'm on number G3 already?
No, we're on G2.
But G2 requires a vote, and that's what I'm asking for?
But he doesn't...
And you're not, you are? Okay, everybody else? Trustee McCrory?
Aye.
And Trustee Beizer?
Aye.
Okay, I'm with you guys now. Five zero, and no student vote this time, right?
No student vote.
No student vote, okay, let's move it on. I'm moving on in my mind here. Okay, that's Barrera, and who's seconding that? Okay, Baso, and G3, no public speakers on that. So let's move forward if there's no discussion. And this one, you don't vote on this one either, Patterson. Right, okay, so McCrory? Okay, and Beizer?
Aye.
Okay, and the rest of us will vote electronically, so that passes 5-0, with no student vote. And now we're on H1, which is an information item. It's the update on the impact of Governor's May revise.
Thank you, President.
To you, Superintendent Jackson.
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne.
Thank you, President Whitehurst-Payne. As we know, the governor announced the May revision for the 2223 budget proposal, and this outlined the goals and objectives for the next fiscal year. Staff is here, Drew Rollins, our chief business officer, will provide an update to the board on the May revise. So I'm going to turn it over to Drew. Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening. I have a brief presentation on Governor's May revise to the 2223 state budget. Just real quickly, Governor Newsom presented his May revision 11 days ago on May 13th. There's a lot of very good and promising news, however, the details of the impact to the district are still forthcoming. So a lot of this, or most of this presentation, really focuses on the state budget as opposed to district level. And just one bit of backdrop with that, just to set some context, from January, from the January budget to the May revision, the state's estimate for tax revenue combined for '21, '22, and '22, '23 grew by $55 billion. Big number. So here's just a quick review and a reminder of the state's budget timeline. Now with the May revision in place, the state assembly and the senate are working to bring their initiatives forward. School Services of California noted that while the May revise provides new discretionary educational funds, reconciling different priorities between Governor Newsom, the assembly, and the senate may not be easy, is what they say. School Services reports both the assemblies and state senate's plans would actually even bring more funding into the local control funding formula as compared to where the governor's proposal is. And all of that driving to the state getting to a balanced budget passed on June 15th. Nope, excuse me, I think I went too far there. Some, just quickly, some major themes as presented by the governor. Prop 98 funding is at an all-time high. As we've discussed before, I think, many districts across the state have been challenged by declining enrollment, and the May revision addresses those supports for enrollment and attendance declines. There is specific language for some areas, such as universal transitional kindergarten, expanded learning opportunities, and school nutrition. And I think important to note is while there is new funding, much of it is one-time funding. Just a quick graphic here, Prop 98 is a constitutional formula that determines how much the state must spend on K-12 education agencies. I think part of the point of this graph is to show that if you look back to the last decade, Prop 98 funding has nearly doubled. I think the other thing to look at and the thing that I was wrestling with was you don't see a whole lot of change. We talked about a lot of money, but then you look at the '21, '22, and the '22, '23 bars, and they're, and they're pretty close. That's because of the idea that Prop 98 funding starts as an estimate and changes through the progress and is revised through the budget cycle. The budget amount for the current year, '21, '22, has increased from 99.1 billion to 110, to 110.2 billion. So the state provides one-time settle-up payment to ensure that they're meeting the minimum guarantee for even this year. The local control funding formula is the largest category of our funding provided, or provided by the state to schools. It's about two-thirds of our overall funding. Within the May revise, here are just some of the highlights of the change. The FY 2223 cost of living adjustment, or COLA, was increased by another 1.2 percent from, from 5.33 to now 6.56. I think also, the other thing to note is the COLA increase is applied to programs outside of the LCFS, such as special ed and nutrition, and that's not always the case as we see COLA get applied. And there's $2.1 billion of ongoing Prop 98 general fund increases to the LCFF base funding. The funding is described as helping fiscal impacts of rising pension obligations, increased costs for goods and services, and ongoing other local budget concerns. And then the third bullet here, they call it kind of the two-headed monster of declining enrollment, and then for those fewer students that are showing up, declining attendance. And all of that figures into our ADA calculation, which drives much of the state allocation. So there's an attempt in the May revise to help refine the support to school districts struggling with that issue. So we not only get to adjust our attendance, but as we mentioned to you in our second interim projection, we also get to use a three-year rolling average in our calculations. So again, helping us transition and deal with COVID loss, et cetera. Within the May revise is, the largest piece is $8 billion in discretionary funding. These are one-time general fund discretionary funds, which will be allocated on a pure, per pupil basis, which translates to, across the state, roughly $1,500 per ADA. Kind of, some of the highlights of those are things like expanded learning opportunities program. There's a $400 million increase in the May revise, bringing the total program up to $4.8 billion. There's a few other things attached to those. There's another $1.5 billion for community schools, bringing the total up to $4.5 billion across the state. The goal of that, as written, is to provide support to every qualifying LEA that wants it. Nutrition, we talked on that before, but again, universal meals, both breakfast and lunch for all students in next year. So there's money added to that to, again, make that balance for the school districts. Touch on educator workforce on the next page. Again, not a whole lot of money, but continued support for universal transitional kindergarten, $1.8 billion for, or, I'm sorry, $1.8 billion in the state for deferred maintenance programs. So also in the language, talks a lot about supporting investment in the school workforce. Here are just some of the ideas that come across, both certificated and classified employee support. $500 million added for residency slots for teachers and counselors. Minimum wage increases slightly due to the state triggering an inflation number of 7 percent, things like that. So there's a lot of good news in there for supporting our workforce. Put an advocacy slide up. You can see some of the results of our advocacy efforts led by Dr. Enrique Racho, and I think goes without saying that the, the work will continue. But again, we just want to point those out. Our next steps, we're here tonight looking at the May revise. The LCAP workshop is on June 8th, which goes hand-in-hand with budgeting. And on June 21st, we will bring back our first read of the budget along with the LCAP. And you can see, we also have our trans up there, and then ideally, budget approval on June 28th. We're awaiting statewide guidance that will be passed down on budgeting based on the May revise. It'll come down from the state to the county office. But we're, we're fairly certain right now, not, that not everything you see and hear here will even make it into our budget when we bring budget, the budget forward for adoption. There's just too many things with too many moving parts at this point. So, but that's where we are with it. Lastly, Ms. Jordan McCallis, our executive director of finance, is on the Zoom if you have any really hard questions, and otherwise, that's our presentation, and we'll leave it with that.
Thank you. We have a couple of speakers who are virtual. Francisca Salcedo and Joy Love. Three minutes each, please.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, yes, thank you. Yes, I support postponing the implementation of the student vaccine mandate, but I oppose reinstating a student vaccine mandate for July 23rd, 2023 or later. I believe that the school district has overreached-
Sorry, that is the next item, H2. We'll call you then.
Okay.
If you just hold on a moment. And Joy Love, are you on H1, which is the, we're talking about the governor's May revision to the budget? Joy Love, I see she is there. Please unmute yourself. Joy Love. Okay, perhaps she's on the other item also. With that, board members, would you like to talk? Yes?
Yeah, thank you, President Whitehurst. Just a quick question. Do we have a sense, Drew, of how many of our employees will see a wage increase as a result of the minimum wage increase statewide?
I don't know that. I don't know if education is a-
Do we have a ringer?
What we do know is the minimum wage is currently at $15 per hour. This changes it to $15.50 per hour on January 1st. It does affect some folks within our food service programs, noon duties, but I don't know specific numbers beyond that.
Good evening. I don't have specific numbers, but we've actually been monitoring the minimum wage increase for the past, gosh, four years?
Yeah.
And we have preemptively, the board had actually authorized us to begin the $15 minimum wage a few years ago.
Yes.
And so we've been doing that. With our subsequent year-over-year salary increases, we've been able to stay ahead of that.
Got it.
And then Mr. Rollins and I will be working on some long-term planning for what it looks like into the future, given what we see here and some other long-term planning that we're taking a look at.
Great, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Other, other questions?
Yeah.
Why, why do we see such a large investment in one-time funds? I find it confusing because we have such a large investment in education, period. So what is the reason? I was trying to understand, why wouldn't they try to sustain it long-term? What's the, what's the reaction? Because it limits what you can do so much.
Well, I think it's just that uncertainty of the future, right? And I think that's, at least some of us read it as that's what they're telegraphing a little bit. I, I can't remember where I saw it, but there was information from School Services of California, I believe, that talked about that, too, that this is shades of, you know, 2000, you know, but just that, there's just that uncertainty. It's very good times, but how much longer do those times last? Are the macro-level economic indicators pointing to we're heading, we're going to hit this peak and head into a recession? As, as we, I think we know, the governor established the rainy day fund a few years back, which would play into this, but again, that, I think that's just the, the basic response is just the uncertain, the uncertain future.
And what is, to what extent do we have authority over how we spend those one-time dollars? To what extent do we need to spend all of them within a set period of time?
It really will depend on, and that's part of this process, is watching the continued language, watching how this comes out of the state within the next month. We believe we'll probably have a reasonable amount of discretion to work with that money, though.
So then there'll be a goal to focus on more long-term, on sustaining long-term rather than individual one-time spending at a larger amount? That's our focus?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Any others? Vice President Bazza?
I just had a, yeah, thank you. I just had a clarification with regard to the, the lunches and I think it's breakfast. Will that, again, be available to all students, or, I wasn't clear on that?
Yes, so what the, what the state is driving is universal meals to all, available to all students. So a breakfast and a lunch, what, you know, the majority, probably 90% of typical school meal funding is at federal level from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. So what the state is committing to is they will cover whatever funding is not covered to the same degree, whatever funding is not covered by the Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a huge help to the schools because I know it's like an administrative nightmare every year for schools trying to get the parents to fill out forms and, you know, determine who gets the lunches, who doesn't, and it's such a-
Right.
So I'm glad to see that we'll, we're able to continue that without having to put all that on our schools.
We still will have to do some of that work because, again, the state wants us to maximize the funding available from the federal government, and then we'll, we'll backfill behind that. So we're working through that process. The food service team is working on how we, how we best carry that out, but there's still we, will be some things we have to get through to do that.
Thank you. Dr. McQuarrie?
Yeah, thank you, Drew. So a great report about increased funding that addressed several categorical needs, but one need I didn't hear was transportation. Well, what do we know about funding for offsetting some of our transportation costs?
It, it was relatively silent on that, I believe. I think there was some information addressed in January, and there wasn't, and I'm going a little bit from memory here, there was not a lot of change in the May revise. I will offer that even today, some of our transportation staff attended an EPA webinar on clean school buses. So that's one of the things we continue to watch and monitor, and we want to have our foot in the door at every opportunity for grant funding along the lines of that. But beyond that, I'm not aware, and we'll look into it a little more, Dr. Mike, but I'm not aware of anything new within the May revise regarding transportation.
Thank you.
That's a really big issue in the county for some of the school districts that are out in East County, where they have nothing but, everybody rides the bus for the most part, and it's, the cost is prohibitive, so, you know, up and down the state, they were talking about that. Okay. I thank you for this report, and good job. Thank you. Let us move forward now to item H2. And this is a COVID-19 update. Superintendent Jackson, would you please introduce this item, and then we'll get a motion on it.
Thank you, President. Dr. Whitehurst-Payne. We have given lots of consideration to the vaccine mandate for our students ages 16 and older. And at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, we had committed to making sure that we were going to ensure the health and safety of our students, our staff members, our community. And we had multiple mitigation strategies. Air purification, our air filtration, hand washing, masking, distancing, and those are things that we focused on. And then, as we came into this past winter, we recognized, or even prior to, the need for us to pay attention to community spread. And one of the things we paid attention to was our partnership with our health practitioners, our scientists, and we believed that moving forward with the vaccine mandate would do that. And when we did that, we also talked about paying attention to the context, the situation that we were in. So we moved forward, the board and staff came together, and we decided to move forward with the vaccine mandate. And given where we are in the current context, paying attention to our partners and the health professionals, our own Dr. Terrace, our executive director, Nurse Barndollar, as we say, Susan. We've been talking a great deal about this during our COVID meetings with our partners, and we have a recommendation bringing forward to delay our vaccine mandate. In addition, we've also been paying attention to how to make sure that we continue to practice the mitigations we have in place. And as we see a slight uptick in our cases, we want to pay attention to masking, and we want to pay attention to what's happening in individual communities, and also pay attention to what's happening district-wide. So tonight's presentation, Susan Barndollar will be presenting, Dr. Terrace will be virtually here to answer any- and, uh, also pay attention to what's happening district-wide. So tonight's presentation, uh, Susan Barn Dollar will be presenting. Uh, Dr. Terrace will be virtually here to answer any questions. But we do have a, a recommendation that we would ask the board to take action on, uh, delaying the vaccine mandate to, uh, June 2023. And, uh, in addition, we'll also be presenting, uh, our strategy around, um, triggers that would mandate, uh, mask-wearing on our campuses indoors. And, uh, Susan will talk more specifically about it. So, uh, we do need a vote, or we are asking for a vote around the, the delay of the vaccine mandate. The masking is more procedurally, uh, appropriate for information only.
All right, let's get a motion on the floor, please. Okay, that's Barrera, and the second on it is Abaza. Thank you. Okay, we have speakers. You didn't want to say anything otherwise, or did you?
She's gonna be presenting.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, President Whitehurst Payne, Superintendent Jackson. So tonight, just like Superintendent Jackson said, I'm here to discuss the student COVID vaccine mandate and give you an update. So where we've been, where we are, and where we want to go. And Dr. Terrace is here, if you have any questions. So a quick review of where we have been and where we are now. September of 2021, our vaccine roadmap was approved by the Board of Education. The mandate to implement was set for January of 2022, and that was delayed due to operational concerns and considerations prohibiting feasible implementation of the roadmap on the schedule adopted by the board. A trial court ruling did not delay later implementation because of a stay that ruling was granted by the Court of Appeals, allowing us to proceed. During that time, state legislation came in mandating vaccines at the state level. In February of 2022, um, a student vaccine update was sent to the board, um, for a fall 2022 implementation. That was approved March 8th. April of 2022, the state asked for, um, a hold on Senator Pan's Bill 871, and that was to remove the, um, personal belief exemptions. And then in April of 2022, California delayed, even without that part, they delayed their, um, COVID vaccine mandate until, till June of 2023. And now here we are with a proposal to postpone, postpone our board-approved student vaccine until July 2023. So why have the change in circumstances allowed us to postpone our mandate? The four points here, I will discuss in more detail, but very briefly, are current student vaccine rates for those FDA-approved students. For the students sixteen and older is high at eighty percent. There's low in-school transmission, and we have other epidemiological considerations. We have strong supports and other mitigation strategies in place. And we want to create alignment with the state and apply the mandate to a broader age range when it's implemented through us and the state at the same time. So this is, um, the chart of our current vaccine rates, and what I want you to focus on is our students aged sixteen and older. They are at eighty percent fully vaccinated, and then please note an additional four percent have received one dose. So we hope that means they're gonna get their second dose, and we can look at it like an eighty-four percent rate. Also not on the chart is we have a high, um, staff vaccine rate. Our vaccine rate with our staff is at nine, ninety-four percent. So there is limited evidence of widespread classroom transmission of the virus, especially with current ventilation safeguards remaining in place and with an encouragement to voluntarily wear masks indoors. As new variants come into existence, the original vaccines have lost a significant margin of effectiveness to prevent new infections after the first few months. And by closely monitoring our community case rates, our local wastewater, our own in-district wastewater, our surface sampling, we continue to want to increase our medication measures during high transmission periods. And we'll talk a little bit more about our mask triggers, uh, in a later slide. So this, um, this graph shows the comparison between the community case rate and our in-school case rate. The blue line is in-school, the orange is the county data. That huge spike you see was our, this year's January, February spike, and we continue to remain low. The other thing is note, and when you look at that blue line, it's kind of hard to tell, but we're still at a case rate that's slightly lower than the case rate we started at the beginning of the year. So even though we have been measuring everything really closely, we continue to be much lower than the county numbers. So our, our goal is to continue our other mitigation strategies. So we are going to continue our asymptomatic and symptomatic testing. Currently, we have onsite testing at all of our sites and at the two remote sites, and we are really ramping up our take-home tests. We continue to distribute our at-home tests. We continue with our optimal ventilation. We're continuing with our vaccine campaign, so that's not stopping. Um, we are, we have our mobile vans and our other resources that bring vaccines to students and everybody in the community. Um, and we also, um, have contracted with some providers to bring more vaccine information to, um, a large group of parents and students. And then for masking, currently highly recommended, and we've just recently set in place some triggers that would, um, that we would initiate should our case rates go higher or should we have certain issues at specific sites. And then the fourth point is to align with the state. So California is waiting until July 2023 or later. And we want to, we feel that that makes an important point. Their point is, it's likely that the full FDA approval would be in place for children aged twelve and older. And then we could then align with the state mandate for grades seven and above, so we'd bring up to a larger swath of students. So with input from parents, administrators, and staff, we put in place a set of triggers for the remainder of this school year and for summer school, for when and if an individual school would need to resume wearing masks indoors for a prescribed period of time, and also when the entire district would have to wear masks mandatory for a prescribed period of time. So for an individual school, because of the variability in the case rates at different schools and the different areas of the district, choosing individual schools based on their cases can bring an individualized approach. So we would implement the following guidelines for resuming masks indoors for a minimum of a fourteen-day period if the following conditions were present. So one set of conditions would be if within the past fourteen days, we had three outbreaks at a school, and at the same time, five percent or more of the student population, students and staff, were infected. And please note, I say three outbreaks, not three cases. So an outbreak would have to occur in three different classrooms in that same school within that two-week period of time. And most people know an outbreak is also three or more cases in the same classroom. So I just want to make sure we're clear, it would be outbreaks, not cases. The other trigger for an individual school would be that on a three-consecutive-day span, ten percent or more of the student population would be absent due to illness. So we have a way of tracking the absences, have a way of tracking their illness if they're out for illness. And if that occurred for a three-day period of time, that would trigger a mandatory mask, um, for, for fourteen days. And then district-wide, we have always said this, this is the recommendation from the CDC. Um, when looking at the CDC community levels through their website, if we would go into the high area, which is orange, it's green, yellow, and orange. If we were to become in the high level, the, that would be high for the entire community, then the whole district would go back to a mandatory period of indoor masks. So for the board action, to my page. The requested board action is to approve postponing the implementation of the student vaccine mandate as a condition of in-person learning and participation in extracurricular activities until the state proceeds, but no earlier than July 2023. The parameters of any student vaccine mandate for July 2023 or later implementation will be based on the data and conditions at the time, which will be brought to the board for review and action. Thank you. I, any questions? And Dr. Terrace is here.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, we're set for questions.
Okay, good. Let's, uh, first of all, get the speakers, and we have fifteen, I believe, nine virtual and six in-person. Francisca Sosey that you wanted to speak on this topic, so we gotta cue everybody up. Sharon McKeman, Joy Love, Mel Brewer, and Beverly R. Let's take those five first with Francisca starting out.
Yes, hi, thank you.
One minute, one minute each, please. We only have twenty minutes total, so one minute.
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, yes, I'm a mother and a, and a member of the community. So, um, I do support postponing the implementation of the student vaccine mandate, but I am opposing the, uh, reinstating it for July 23rd, 2023 or later. I believe that the school district has overreached its authority when it has acted to require stricter COVID-19 mandates than the state requires. Uh, these mandates have affected the most vulnerable students, namely English learners. As we had, we heard today, there, um, we have more long-term English learners, and that can affect their entire, um, school career. Uh, it also just fortunately affected low-income students, special education students, and fostered children. As far as masking, my daughter will be returning to Sunday Unified in the fall. She'll be attending Crawford High School. She has severe eczema. So for her, uh, masking would really exacerbate her symptoms. And also, I would be concerned for students.
Thank you. Some ask if we could find out later.
Hello. Hello?
Hello, is this Sharon McKeman?
Yes.
Okay, you're up next. Thank you.
Okay, am I, do you want me to speak now? I'm sorry.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. Yes, I, um, am speaking, uh, on behalf of, of many parents in the district, and we are urging you to do the right thing. Obviously, what you have on your agenda tonight is to delay the vaccine mandate, and so we are encouraging you to, in fact, do that. However, we are also asking you to go a step further, um, and not waste any more taxpayer dollars on an appeal of the legal decision against your vaccine mandate. That stay that, you know, was granted was just a procedural stay during the appeal time. And, uh, you know, obviously, as you've heard, there are a lot of parents that would like to see, uh, there not be a, any type of a vaccine mandate go forward, but tonight, we are, you know, specifically in support of you delaying that vaccine mandate. And then also, um, you know, we are opposing any, any return to masking. Uh, you're, that's stepping outside of science and.
Thank you. Uh, Joy Love, one minute, please.
Yes, hello. Um, I agree with, uh, the former speakers. I, uh, think that there shouldn't even be a mandate come in July of 2023. I do feel that, uh, this board and has extreme, overstepped their bounds excessively. Uh, children have been physically and psychologically abused from all these mandates that you've been enforcing, especially with the ineffective PCR testing, et cetera, et cetera. And I urge you to really consider these students as people and not as commodities, which you've been treating them as by enforcing all this stuff.
Thank you. Mel Brewer?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you speak?
Yes, I, um, continue to.
Please unmute yourself.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, please stop the mandate, uh, not even in 2023. I don't agree. You have completely overstepped your bounds. I want to remind you that I don't know if any of you have read the vaccine insert for the Pfizer vaccine, which says, section thirteen point one, um, has not been assessed for carcinogenic, mutagenic, genotoxic, toxicity, or fertility. So, um, I know you all love your vaccine, however, we don't know in ten years if your children or you Patterson will be infertile from this vaccine, frankly, or have cancer. So please stop this. This is nonsense. It's a cold. My children had it. It was nothing. They survived, and children don't die from COVID. All the adults that needed the vaccine got the vaccine. End of story. This should be over. And the masking, the same. No science to support masking. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly R.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening. Well, I'm happy or glad to hear that Sunday Unified is postponing the mandate, but this is a misrepresentation to the parents and the students that you can legally mandate a vaccine. California Health and Safety Code 120335B1/11, um, states that you cannot, and it has to go through legislation, state legislation, like any other mandate. So why are we coercing parents and students and wasting our time and money in court to the same conclusion that the school does not have the legal authority to mandate a vaccine? Nor do they have to mandate masks that are EUA nor PCR tests. So we keep going round and round while our children are mentally and physically abused with these barks that scare and coerce students to get these injections. Uh, by giving these parameters, that once full FDA, this would further confirm that you have been giving an experimental vaccine to children over a year. We have seen that, by the fair's report, that there's almost twenty-eight thousand deaths.
Thank you. Heather Deacon, please.
Thank you. We also serve to be able to send our kids to school and not get sick with a preventable deadly disease. So I very much support the vaccine mandate, and I hope you consider, um, moving up your timeline and making it sooner rather than waiting for a year from now. Thank you for finally, finally establishing triggers for restoring the indoor masks in classrooms as we are well into the sixth wave of infections. With all due apologies to the superintendent, this is not a slight uptick. This current wave right now is larger than any previous wave, with the only exception being the one that started in November. It's more transmissible than that one was. The number of kids with COVID now in our schools is much higher than it was in the fall. Nurse Fonderler should have displayed a graph of the actual student cases, not testing positivity. You are using the CDC trigger of high community level, which is only intended as a measure to preserve hospital capacity. High community level is not a good indicator of how disruptive a further COVID outbreak would be to the school.
Thank you. Emily Mamouf.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I wanted to, um, support that, um, this gets voted to delay, and I'm hoping not to bring it back. I also wanted to, um, ask that you please do not continue with the lawsuit because, um, you know, it's, it just seems ridiculous to work on that appeal, given the current state. I think you guys are realizing that. But also, I really want to ask the board to please, like, this is such a volatile issue, and I don't know why you're going into these issues and then, um, you know, surprise, the parents are upset. Forty-two percent by Barn Dollar's own statistics of kids under twelve, under twelve have had their kids vaccinated. I mean, sixty percent of parents want to wait and see, and why don't you just let that work itself out? Let the state handle it and, and not wade into these volatile issues because all parents want is their kids to go to school and learn math, reading, writing. Please, just focus on that.
Thank you. Alyssa Titus, please.
Hi, I'm calling in to support that you postponed the vaccine mandate. I'm, I'm a. I'm a parent and I'm also an educator, and I think that, that it's absolutely the right thing to do at this point in time and align with what not just the state, but the rest of the country is currently doing. So I would like to support the postponing of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Grace.
Melissa Grace.
You're in person. Okay, thank you.
Just the button. He's got the button. Thank you. My name is Melissa Grace. I'm a resident of District Four. I'm a registered Democrat. I'm in a long-term same-sex relationship, and my daughter's 13. She's a student of SDUSD. It's nice to see you guys all face to face, as I've been had to face you guys all digitally on Zoom. Since 2020, I have been active in stating my perspective of opposing these vaccine mandates for children, and I want to just go on record saying that I was actually blocked and banned from participating in some of the early meetings with Dr. Howard Taras. So my question is, based on your own information, it says that the vaccines lose efficacy after the first two months. So why would you try to step outside your jurisdiction, which is what is actually legal and ethical, to try to go beyond the scope of what the state allows? It was found that you guys had legal liability, that you were going outside of your jurisdiction in the recent court decision. Minute goes fast.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Jennifer is in person. Jennifer followed by Andrea Kelly and Carla Milan.
Hello.
Hi.
I would just like to say that I do support you guys delaying the starting of such a mandate in terms of vaccinations. I will let you know that I oppose having the vaccination mandated on anyone, in particular children. I am not an anti-vaxer myself, and my entire family has had all of their vaccines except for this one. I am a good parent, and I want you to know that, and I'm doing this for the sake of my daughter, for her future, because you and others in this entire world really have no idea what this vaccine is going to do five, 10 years down the road. I do not want to see our children being guinea pigs. And I am a parent, and I should be allowed to make that choice for my child, not being told that they have to. They are also allowed to have an in-person education, and I would respect that you would follow through with that if you want to do what is best for children in our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Kelly?
Hi, I was a student of San Diego Unified School District from kindergarten all the way through I graduated from Mission Bay High School, and my oldest of three boys is now a choiced-in student at Kate Sessions Elementary School. I also will have a UTK student at Holmes next year. I have loved San Diego Unified School District. I went through the whole thing. I have wanted my kids to be in public school. We have the opportunity to go outside of the public school district for all of my kids, but they have the right to a public school system. And by mandating something that I don't see fit for my child, you are forcing me out of public school.
Thank you. Carla Milan. Okay, in person, Sharon McKeeman. Allison, wasn't she on Zoom? I mean, Allison Minal and Jamie Warzimer. Not here. Okay, Jamie, you're on virtual. Would you unmute yourself and speak, please? Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I was there. Sorry for the confusion. I just wanted to say I'm also a parent of two students in SDUSD, and I also support postponing the vaccine mandate. Obviously, I would, well, not obviously, but I would also prefer that we're not mandating the vaccine at all. I ditto what, second what Jennifer and the other parents have said, that that is a choice that we should be allowed to make as parents. That's a choice that I should be allowed to make for my own children. And also, just on the, looking at it from a bigger picture, if 80% of your students have been vaccinated already, and a ton of them have also, I'm sure, already had COVID, as noted by the fact that we're also trying to mask again, I think pretty well everybody's got some sort of immunity. I do also strongly oppose any sort of additional masking or other mandated measures. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that's it. We don't have anybody else who's responding. With that, board members, you get to talk some. Anybody who wants to talk? Okay, then, yes. Trustee Patterson.
Yeah, I'm definitely, when I look at what we're moving forward, it is a little bit ironic to me since we put so much forth to implement this vaccine mandate. I know I spoke with Dr. Taras at length to understand his, to understand his reasoning behind it and why he was looking to move forward in this direction. I definitely, I do struggle a little bit to look to move in this direction, since we've said that the efficacy of vaccines is so high, and we've put them forth so much, and I do hear the medical community saying that they are equal to a vaccine that we have on any of the other vaccines on our list. So I'm probably going to abstain on this one, as I don't think I'm quite in the state to formally make an argument, but I'm going to abstain on this.
Thank you. And with that, trustee McQuary.
I support staff recommendation. I think a million deaths across the country says that this virus is deadly. I think we've acted on behalf of the safety of students and staff. We know that people who are non-vaccinated are more likely to catch the virus, and people who are non-vaccinated, when they do catch the virus, are more likely to go to hospital and are more likely to die. So I'm thinking that we are taking the right step. We are looking at the science. We have advisory groups who are specialists in their field at UCSD. We're taking a look at the advice from our doctor, our nurses, our county, our health experts, as well as our educational experts. I think we're taking the right steps at the right time, and we will need to revisit if the situation changes.
Thank you. So that's all the discussion we have. Vice President Baso.
Yeah, I all support the, the staff consideration as well, but just out of frustration, as trustee Patterson has said, you know, we went through so much with getting the vaccine mandate in place, but we are, you know, it, we're learning new things about this virus all this, all the time. So I understand we need to be resilient, we need to be flexible. I just want to mention where it does state, original vaccines have lost a significant margin of effectiveness to prevent new infections after the first two months. As trustee McQuary said, even though they've lost effectiveness to prevent new infections, they've also kept people out of the hospital. So I think that needs to be clarified in there that, you know, they're, people are getting COVID, but they're, they're not the ones that are going into the hospital and dying. So the vaccine is still extremely effective in terms of, you know, long-term, in terms of keeping people alive. So I'm, I'm not completely happy with having to do this, but I understand where we stand right now, and I think it's, it is important that we're looking at the numbers and, and making sure we're watching, because, you know, there is concern about, you know, new upticks in the virus, and that's already happening now, as one of the callers mentioned. And I think we need to be very cognizant of that, because we are on a roller coaster right now, and we're not out of this by any means. And, you know, although we'll go forward with this, well, I think, you know, at least myself will vote on this to support for now. It's not over, you know, we will definitely need to reconsider next July and keep a close eye on this. The other question I actually had about was about testing. So are we still testing, like, regularly, the students at school? Because my concern is if we're having kids take tests at home, how are we knowing the results of those tests? Because we have to just rely on the data that's coming back from the parents, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so we are testing at sites. We're doing the point-of-care rapid antigens, so right there, but we are doing a lot of home tests. And with our San Diego County Office of Vet, our decision tree, they're allowing us to take those home tests with, with a picture, with a date on it, and a timestamp, and we are taking all of those and reporting all of those to the counties. So we are a large amount of, we provide a large amount of data to the county public health department, because we are reporting every single one of those positive tests. And then when students leave with symptoms or have to go home with symptoms, they go with a home test. We're taking those reports when they do the test at home, and we're just counting that data. So when we talk about the positivity rate, that would, that 5%, that would include from all sources.
Yeah, I actually did have some additional questions. Do we have schools that will immediately revert to masking after this update tonight?
Not currently. We don't have any schools that have had either the, the three outbreaks. That would start us really looking at the percentage of positivity or the 10% absentee rate because of illness. So no. And currently with the CDC guidelines, the county transmission rate, we're still in the green.
Just so I can clarify, so a 10% absentee for illness, so that's just using the literal code of the absences, but we don't know if it's COVID or not specifically?
We do have COVID codes, but we want to take all illnesses into account.
Okay, interesting. My other question was, could, could I be, could someone describe to me the deliberations with the UCSD doctors on this specific change?
Is Howard available?
Dr. Taras? It's on Zoom?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we do hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, so I imagine you're talking about the, are you talking about the masking issue and the attendance data, or are you talking about the vaccine as far as where we stand on that?
Yeah, I'm talking about the decision tonight that we're voting on to delay the vaccine mandate to 2023.
Right, okay. Yeah, so, I mean, the, the scientific basis for this is how things have changed since January, February, March. You know, initially, the, in the initial studies of the vaccine, they were about 90% effective to prevent a reinfection. When Delta occurred, after two doses, it was about 58% effective in present, in preventing a reinfection. And with Omicron, after two doses and a couple of months, it's only 35% effective in preventing a reinfection. So if a great deal of the impetus to have a vaccine mandate was to lower the number of kids who are missing schools, that has somewhat waned, because the effectiveness of reinfection has waned as well.
Howard, can you speak to the conversations you've had with UCSD medical physicians on this matter?
So the last time that we formally engaged this group, there was, there was somewhat mixed on whether there should be a vaccine mandate. And with the, with, with two of them feeling that it wasn't necessary, and the other six saying that it was, we haven't collected all their opinions again on this particular occasion, but the reasoning behind the two that opposed it have magnified, which was the data I just gave you now, as well as that we have an 80% vaccination rate amongst the group that would be eligible for the vaccine mandate, and the likelihood of making much of a dent in that is questionable.
So I guess, just like we have policies right now where students who don't get their DTAP vaccine can't attend classes, we do that because that's, that's our role in believing that it's important to promote public health. And from what I'm understanding, I guess, this decision is about if we're an institution that works to improve attendance outcomes or works in any capacity to support public health?
Right, so, yes, a vaccine like, say, DTAP, Diphtheria tetanus tassus, that is less for attendance and our own educational goals. That is where the state, I believe, is using schools as the best way to protect public health in general. The vaccine mandate for COVID was thought to serve both of those purposes. When we voted on it, when you guys all voted on it back when, right now, it looks like it would have more of an effect on public health and less of an effect on our own attendance rate.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for everyone. I just want to say that there's absolutely no doubt that this has really been a trying time, and nothing is perfect. But given the folks I personally know from my church, from communities around who have died, who've gotten this disease and died, not the fact that they took the vaccines and then died from that, but just died without it before it even was out, I absolutely support it. And just as a personal point, my doctor recently tested me and found that I started getting a shot over a year ago, and over, I've had three shots, and it started out with 100, 150, whatever the units are. And when she tested me like a month ago, I still had 250 units. And she said that I didn't need to get anymore, because I would probably get sick, because my body is protecting me from, with the vaccine. So I just say, no, we don't know it all, but from my experience and from a lot of the experience of children in the system whose parents may or may not be coming to share, this is real. And I am definitely voting to support them. We've given folks an opportunity, if they don't want to return, to go online and do that virtually. But for those parents who were very concerned and who are concerned, I absolutely support this, but I think that, given the data points that we have, we need to support the motion that you brought forward, and I will be voting for it also. So with that, trustee Patterson, you've said you are abstaining.
Vote present, yeah.
You'll vote present, okay. And Baso, well, let's go ahead and get Biser.
Aye.
And McQuary is an aye also, and the others will vote electronically. So that passes unanimously with the student board member voting present. Thank you for that, and thank you, Susan. I know it's been a lot of hard work, and thank you, Dr. Taras, for all of your work in helping us to figure this out. Let us move down to aye, which is the superintendent's consent agenda. I would like a motion excluding I 43, which has been withdrawn by staff, and then we will just, we'll hear the speakers on I 42, I 45, and I 48 after we get a motion in a second.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Biser, and the second is?
Aye, McQuary.
Dr. McQuary, thank you. And now for our speakers on I 42, we have here. Emily Mamoud. And now for our speakers on I-42, we have here Emily Mamu Tu, who's virtual.
Hi, thank you. Can you, oh, sorry, can you tell me which one I-42 is? Because I think I signed up for comments on your I items.
You want to know the title of the item?
Yes, please.
The Second Amendment to the Agreement with the Center for Effective Philanthropy. That's what you signed up for?
Oh, yes. Use truth. You know, yes, what struck me with this, I mean, you guys know I comment sometimes and time, and I think I'm just saying, I see this all the time where we're signing amendments and we're continuing things and the board just continues to spend money. But what were the results of the first, the first batch of money we spent with this organization? Where are those survey results? Why aren't they put forth here? How did they inform the LCAP? I mean, I just, I'd really like to see what we spent the money on, what the results were. And I'd really like the board, I'm really asking the board, can you please, you know, just dig in a little more to these large sums of money you're spending before you go and approve more money? Because, you know, how do we know? Thanks.
Thank you. And greetings, Mrs. Francine Maxwell.
Good evening, good evening. Francine Maxwell, southeastern San Diego resident. I stand before you on behalf of some grandmothers from the community. I want to say they appreciate the hybrid model, but they don't appreciate the way that the meetings are ran, even though it is the business meeting. District E has yet another survey research data program to put students into why. They need to continue with their bell-to-bell teaching. Why doesn't this go happen north of eight? It consistently happens in District E, not with all the clusters. There's a problem. Instead, the kids continue to get grilled, researched, to the point where it's haphazard and you cannot put your pen on what has been implemented from this. She als, a group of grandmothers also want to know that they feel that enough is enough unless you can continue to show them why their students in District E are experimental. They're constantly being subjected to this. They want to know that they, they want you to know that they enjoy the Health Child Survey, and that's done throughout the district. And so why are things always done in certain communities and not the other? And we preach equity, we preach inclusion, and it's time for them to not have their grandchildren and some of their foster children continually be researched. Thank you.
Thank you. And I-45, again, Emily Mamu Tu, and that's, this is, this is an agreement with Caesar Chavez Foundation.
I have two kids. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I have two kids and also I speak quite a bit because literacy is a passion. And I saw this on the, on the agenda and I thought, wow, literacy, but I have not, never heard of Caesar Chavez Foundation for that. Sorry. But anyway, when I look at what they're doing, it's actually not literacy. You know, like one lesson is called Our Voice, Our Justice, they're social emotional lessons. So they're not really a literacy lesson. And I think what I'm asking here is, could you just maybe pull it and figure out if you could spend that $160,000 on a program to help students with dyslexia? The district has no curriculum for students with dyslexia. You have no way that you're testing that in kindergarten. I know you say you're using that fast test or one of those, but it's, it's not a standard-based dyslexia screener. There's no district-wide curriculum with teacher professional development for students with dyslexia. And now here you go, and you're spending $160,000 when all the parents with dyslexia like me are told the district doesn't have money for these programs. So if, you know, this is really about literacy, please just deny this one and rethink how you could use that money. Thanks.
Thank you. We have two speakers on I-48, Joy Love and Mel Brewer. And Mel Brewer, yes.
This was about the testing, correct?
Yes.
Yes, hi. I just want to remind you that the testing that's used is under.
I'm sorry, you, would you unmute yourself?
I don't know why it unmuted. Sorry about that. So the test itself is under EUA and it has ethane oxide in it, which is a known carcinogen. So we don't know what the effects are. Putting that up a child's nose or anybody's nose every single week for prolonged periods, we don't know what that looks like. It's not been FDA approved. On top of that, you know, long-term effects, we don't know if it's going to cause cancer. So also, there's a lot of false negatives, false positives. These tests are not reliable. So I completely oppose any, any testing. I don't think these are a good measure of finding out if kids have infections and risk factors of possible side effects, cancer, different things that it might happen to our children, we don't know. And that's, that's why I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, any more discussion from board members? Trustee Patterson, revoting.
I'll vote yes on aye with an abstention on I-7.
Minus I-7. And trustee Beiser?
Aye.
And Dr. McQuarrie?
Aye.
Okay, and the rest of us will vote electronically. And that passes unanimously with the trustee, student trustee voting aye, except for I-7. Okay, thank you. And that takes us now to our non-agenda public testimony. Yes, it's not quite 10 o'clock yet, so we can get through this before 10, okay? With that, we have received, no more with five, eight total? Okay, so that drops us down to seven. Let's see, a couple of minutes each, okay? Ming Zhang, Mel Brewer, Emily Mamu Tu, and Shane Nelson are virtual.
I'm here, yes. Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about masking. I know that's something we want to push at this time. I want to let you know that there's no peer-reviewed science that shows masking all day does any virus mitigation, especially when they share things like fidgets and eat, play, eat and play side by side with their classmates. There are peer-reviewed studies on how harmful masks are, such as frequent bacterial infections due to touching the mask and surfaces all day long. It restricts the ability to give each other facial expressions. It affects speech and the ability to hear others communicate. It has side effects, such as increased CO2 headaches, brain fog, sleepiness, anxiety, depression, and attentiveness. The risks of masking do not outweigh the benefits, especially when there are no peer-reviewed research that masking actually does prevent the spread of viruses. Do you know what is the higher probability of death for our children? Suicide. Do you know what impacts thoughts of suicide? The ability to, the inability to connect with peers emotionally. Masking plays a huge role in this disconnection when we are unable to share smiles and frowns and connect and tune into others' emotions. It impacts depression and anxiety and suicidal ideation. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Mamu Tu. Okay, Shane Nelson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, Shane.
I just wanted to plant a seed because I know the district has had, has, you know, been losing students. And I know we have magnet programs, and I wanted to propose that maybe you look at a magnet school for students with dyslexia or that teaches the Jordan-Gillingham program. I really think, you know, there are actually public schools in Denver and in Florida that are Jordan-Gillingham-based public schools. And I just think that might be a great addition to this district. It also may be something that can help curb, I know that there is a lot, or there is pressure right now to reduce paying for other private schools to serve students where the needs can't be met at San Diego Unified. And if we can't get a district-wide dyslexia program, I'm wondering if we could look at the school-based program. So I wanted to plant that seed with the board and hope that you can maybe look into making it happen in the coming years. Thanks.
Thank you. We have three people in person. Shane?
Shane, thank you.
Okay. I thought that was Shane. Okay, Shane, would you unmute yourself?
I believe I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, good evening. My name is Shane. I am a healthcare professional. I am a registered nurse and I've worked in the ER the whole time for COVID. The first thing I want to bring up is that half of my COVID patients, which is very small for the last six months, four months, let's call it four months, half of my patients have been quadruple shot it. They've had four of the COVID shots, all different brands, from Moderna to Pfizer. It does not stop anything. Secondly, Dr., I believe, Whitehurst Payne, you said that your antibodies from the shot itself were at 250. Well, my wives are at 2,000 two years later after having COVID and never getting the shot or hospitalized. Secondly, I think it's very inappropriate for everybody to be still calling it a vaccine because it's not. Vaccines work. There is no breakthrough polio, there's no breakthrough measles, mumps, or rubella. For God's sakes, we even eradicated chicken pox with a vaccine. In the healthcare industry, we don't even call the flu shot a vaccine anymore because it does not stop you from getting the flu. It may be less harsh, but in my experience, it has not done much. I still get the flu shot every year and I still get sick once a year. So with that being said, the mandates are not legal.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Now, as I was saying, we got everybody else? Okay, good, thank you. Three people in person, Francine Maxwell, John Lee Evans, Dr. John Lee Evans, and Zangia Kui?
Francine Maxwell, District E resident. As we begin to celebrate the anniversary of George Floyd's murder tomorrow, it's interesting that the grandparents called me today and asked me to come speak on their behalf. These are a group of parents that have grandchildren throughout District E, but when they brought me the alleged issues that are happening at MTM, I was very concerned. Given all the surplus money that we have, given the concerns that a lot of parents cannot express because they're not on Zoom, one of the major issues are where is our race in human relations at advocacy department? It should be back in this culture, in this time, in this season of the San Diego Unified. Completely understanding that we have a restorative justice department, but there is an issue. If there's racial tension on campus, there's knives on campus, allegedly, and the fact that somebody got eight days detention to write a report about a KKK, I think that Houston, we have a problem. And so we need a deep dive of what's occurring in District E on some of our campuses, on racial tension, on knives. Too many students are having weapons. You know there was a fight at Lincoln Lane with students with the knife. We need to have a hard conversation in a safe space and we need to bring back race in human relations and advocacy. We also need to look at who we have on campus and what they're doing with our tax dollars. You're wasting a whole bunch of tax dollars tonight with all this overtime. This business meeting needs to be in control. There is no reason for us to be subjected to trustees going on and on about nothing, patting themselves on the back. Give them five minutes. We have a city council that knows how to run a business meeting and can still interject, engage with the community. Rather, we get a minute or three minutes. It's a beautiful thing, but the trustees are talking way too long, way too much, too much overtime. The police need to go home.
Thank you, Dr. John Lee Evans.
Good evening, Board Member Patterson and other board members, as well as Superintendent Jackson. Parents have been speaking up lately about gifted and advanced programs. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about that. As a former parent of three children in San Diego Unified, one who was in the seminar program, one in the gifted program, the GATE program, and one in regular classes. And I think we first need to understand the history of this. Seminar was really created for kids in high school who were failing and dropping out because they couldn't relate to the other kids. They were very smart, but didn't fit in. It's turned into a very elite group of high-achieving students rather than what was initially intended for. Also for GATE, it helps certain students with gifts and talents. It's also gone along the same route. So I know that there were a lot of times when I was on the board, talk about poor representation of different groups in the program, but without really questioning what was the program in the first place. The program is to classify students. This is the old model of education, to classify students rather than to focus on mastery. We've talked about differential education in terms of teaching, where you can work with different students at different levels simultaneously at the same time. Now, I understand these parents who are concerned, who favor these programs, they want to make sure their child gets a good education. What parent doesn't want that? But the fact of the matter is, there are ways to do this, they just need to understand. We can't just reassure them that it's okay, they're going to get the education they need. It really needs to be shown. So my proposal is that, my challenge to you is that because this, this whole program is a remnant of past education based on classification rather than on mastery, that you get together a group of parents and teachers and staff and really look at revamping the entire program, starting from the beginning, what is best, going to best serve the students who are gifted as well as all the students? Because what we have right now is a binary situation. When you create a certain number of students who are gifted, then you automatically have another gift of students, a group of students who are non-gifted. And so I think this really needs to be looked at. Rather than just trying to tweak the old program, we need to really focus on how to really make a new program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
And good evening, everybody.
Good to see you. Thank you. Xia, Kui, Ms. or Mr. Kui? In person or online? No?
I'm online. Hi, this is Jie Xia.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to speak about the vaccine mandate. I'm glad you are delayed that, but I'm against any kind of mandate, even after July 23rd. I am a mom of junior at UCSD USD. I just want to express my objection to the COVID vaccine mandate. There are three reasons. The long-term effect of the vaccine is still unknown. We shouldn't put our kids into a possible dangerous position and let the children and the family to choose. And the second, current variant of COVID doesn't induce severe condition and it is even milder than flu. And third reason is the protocol currently implemented have been working since the beginning of this school year, and SD USD should be following the current protocol to protect the students and the staff. And so based on these three reasons, I'm against vaccine mandate even after July 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone who provided comments to the board and the superintendent tonight, today, starting out. We do appreciate your input and please know that your perspectives will help us make better decisions and to serve our students, parents, and the community. This concludes the agendized business of the board. The next... The next regular meeting will be held on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. We're having a special LCAP board workshop on June eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and that will be posted. Thank you, and good evening.